This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay. Okay. Call to order, the Southampton Select Board meeting for April 13th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. If we could start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so first order is open time for the public. Do we have anybody here that has got anything to say that is not on the agenda for tonight? All right, seeing none. We're going to move right into our first item of business, which is public hearing. And the public hearing, I'm going to read the reasons for the public hearing, and then we'll call on the interested parties. So in accordance with the provisions of Town General Bylaws 42, the Southampton Select Board will conduct two public hearings on Thursday, April 13th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the first floor meeting room at Southampton Town Hall, 210 College Highway, Southampton, Massachusetts. The first request is from the Garska family to name the East Street Bridge for John V. Garska, who was a town resident, veteran, and former highway superintendent of 36 years. Request number two is from the Southampton Park Commission to name the proposed playground at Labrie Field, Mattie's Magical Playground, in memory of eight-year-old Mattie Schmidt, who was a Southampton resident. The Select Board will consider whether the town will recommend including these two naming right requests on the warrant for the May 2nd annual town meeting. Okay? And anybody wishing to be heard on the matter may appear at the public hearing at the time and place designated above. So at this point in time, I would like to have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So first on the agenda will be the request from the Garska family. And I think anyone who would like to speak on behalf of the family, please come on up and just introduce yourself, give your address, and then we'll let you...
Pat Rento, 24 Cold Springs Road.
Okay, just get a little closer to the mic so we can hear.
Pat Rento, 24 Cold Springs Road. John is my dad. So he started in the town in 1948, and he was the only highway employee at the time. So units were cut out for him. None of the roads were paved or anything. So, you know, back then, the highway department actually did build the roads. They laid the pipe, they did the grading, they did the paving. It's not like it is today where they source things out. So he had to have a lot of knowledge of how to do all these different things.
So, um, so, you know, in doing that, you know, he, he, um, now I lost my train of thoughts.
So laying out the roads is where he worked.
Yeah, so he actually built everything. You know, it's like I said, it's not like it is today where they bid things out and get things done. They actually built the roads. And he was very creative. If, if, um, he would, he would not want to buy something if he could make something. If he could fix it, it was better to fix it than to go out and buy and replace something. So like, like at home, if we needed something done, he'd be like, you, you wait just a minute. And he'd run out to his barn and could be a couple of minutes later, could be a couple hours later, he'd come back with whatever we needed to fix. And so he kind of used that in the town also. You know, he was an old farmer, so, so if, if he needed to, if there was a problem, he would figure out a way to fix it. He made this magic box to put on the grader that would, um, you'd put asphalt in it, and he would take the grader and push it to level the roads and to patch. So that was one thing that he invented for the town. And then he also invented this box that went on the back of the trucks to make patching holes easier in the spring, you know? So it was a more, I think that was more of a safety thing for, for the town, you know? Because taking hot patch off the back of the truck, you know? So it had, it was this trough that went, you know, attached to the back of the truck. I mean, you probably see them now on trucks because they're mass-produced, but he made, he made his. So even after he retired, he still was involved in the town. He helped Ed Colley. He actually went into other towns, surrounding towns. I know he worked in Chesterfield and West Hampton, helping the superintendents out there too. So, you know, Dad loved Southampton. You know, we used to joke that he would spend so much time doing stuff for the town that we had to make an appointment sometimes with him to, just to have some Dad time. But, you know, he was humble, you know? He, he didn't seek out praise. I'm sure he appreciated it when he got it, but, you know, we're here as a family to toot his horn for him. That's, that's all I have to say, so.
Okay, all right. All right, would anybody else from the family like to say something? You're more than welcome, please come on up.
I'm Mike Pronto, I'm Pat's husband, John's son-in-law. I've known John since 1979, and he's a good judge of character because he took me in right off the bat. And John epitomized Southampton. He went way above and beyond his job description. For the kids, the skating rinks, the park, things that he did, ball fields, all the stuff he did was way above and beyond. He didn't accept any, you know, he probably didn't get paid extra for it. He would love, he probably, like she said, he's humble, but I'm sure he'd be proud to have his name on this bridge. And the reason I'd like to see it there is because all the old folks in town know what John stood for. The way the town is changing, a lot of, a lot of people don't know who he is or who he was. And if they saw the name on the bridge, you know, with, with social media, maybe they'll say, who was this guy? Maybe they'll look into his past and see all the good things he did for this town. And again, he, he didn't toot his own horn, and, but he did way above and beyond. And that's one of the reasons we really want this forum. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to, to speak? Anybody on the board like to speak?
I just wanted, I didn't know if, um, I know that it's typical for a lot of veterans to have bridges named after them. I wonder if someone could just say a word or two about his service to the country? Like what branch of the service was he in and do you know what years he served? I think that's important. I have the article here, so some, when he retired, there was mention of it, so. You'd have to get up to the podium, though.
Is it in, in this article?
It's, uh, when he, yeah, right away in the, it tells a story about an incident that happened when he was in the service, but it doesn't say, I don't, I haven't, I don't see exactly where it says, um, what branch he was in.
Richard Leclair, 55 Strong Road. John was my uncle. There was three of them. My grandmother had to send three boys off to war and didn't know if they were coming back. Fortunate for her, all three came back. John was the one that got wounded and was a POW. And fortunate for him, there was, I believe it was a French doctor that saved his arm. He was, he was wounded with a grenade. John was the quiet one of the three boys. Max and Zig were the outstanding ones vocal, but John was the quiet one. John said with the 55 flood, he could build Southampton because there was Chapter 90 money all over the place, and he used it to build this town. There was all sorts of dirt roads, he paved them. He got the, the money and the, and the wear-all to get this done. He was the man, he was, like I said, he was a member of the American Legion in this town. All three boys were. And when they decided to step down, I was told that I had to take over. There was no ifs, ands, or buts about it. I was the new commander, which I kept up until my body decided not to do it anymore. I don't know what else to say about Uncle John. He was a fantastic gentleman.
Good, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any Select Board have any questions or anything you'd like to add or anything? If not, I think he retired, uh, what year was it that he retired here?
This is, um, 8/22/84 is the article in the paper.
Yeah, somewhere around 1984, so long, long service to the town, for sure. Okay. I'm going to ask, just for protocol reason, is there anybody that would like to speak against this recommendation? That's the normal process we go through. Seeing none, hearing none. I think we are probably at this point where we could actually have a motion to approve whether to put the recommendation on the town warrant for the May 2nd annual town meeting. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to put on the warrant for the annual town meeting, the request to name the East Street Bridge after Mr. John Garska.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, so we will have it on the town warrant for the town meeting.
May 2nd.
May 2nd, and we will, you know, have the chance to explain some of the same things probably to the voters that are there that night up at the school, and they'll take a vote. All right? So that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate you.
All right. Okay, um, I'll take a motion, uh, let's see, we, we have the second one, the Park-
We have to close the first one or not?
Well, we can, I think we can do it all under one here. We'll just grab the Park Commission, they were going to come down at 6:15, so they're just about ready to do the second one, so you all can, you're welcome to wait a few minutes if you'd like to. We'll just do the second one and then that'll be done, so. Have fun in Florida.
Have a good time in Florida. I'm glad you were able to be here. You too, Corinne, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, appreciate you coming. All right. See you on the 2nd. So for anybody listening at home, we're just going to wait a minute till the Park Commission folks show up, and the second family, they're just down the hallway, and they'll be here in a minute. How do you like my new town administrator? Yes, got a little younger. Hello, hello?
Looks like they're all coming.
Oh, they're all coming in. Okay. Very good. So thank you for joining the public hearing. We've already opened the public hearing and had the first request. We have two requests under this, um, naming rights hearing for our new bylaw in town, and we've just heard the request from the Garska family. So I'll open this up to the folks that are going to be representing between the Park Commission and the family, I guess, to name the proposed playground at Labrie Field, Mattie's Magical Playground. So anybody who would like to step up and introduce yourself and speak a bit to that, that would be great.
Sure. I attended, started and then-
Sure.
So I'm Mark Reed, Chairman of the Park Commission. Paul La Mack is here as a member of the Commission tonight. Also Juliette Locke is here, which she is part of the Committee, and- Jen. Is representing the Committee and the family tonight. So this application or this request was brought forward to the Park Commission and back in January. And we have been working for many, many years to complete Labrie Field process, and the playground was part of that component, but because of the bids being so overbid, we have never been able to complete this. So we felt that this project would be a wonderful project to try to get another piece of the pie done at Labrie Field. So that the Park Commission supported it wholeheartedly. We made a request from CPC on March 8th.
And you have the Chair of the CPC here tonight as well?
Yes. Yes. And in doing so, they voted six to nothing to approve it, support it too, before town meeting. So I'd like to pass it over to Jen or Juliette and give you a little bit more background because they are the experts.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just introduce yourself and your address.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jen Capshaw, and I live at 3 Kevin Drive here in town. I'm Mattie's aunt, so thank you for taking a few minutes. Juliette's going to pass out a flyer that we made just articulating some of what I'm going to read tonight. But I'm going to keep it short, and I want to start by thanking the CPC and the Parks Commission for their support of this project. I'm going to start by sharing just a little bit about Mattie's life, just a minute or two. So after a 10-month heroic battle, Mattie O'Hair Schmidt, she gained her angel's wings on Saturday, December 31st, 2022. Mattie was born on October 14th, 2014, the beautiful baby girl to town residents Greg and Nora Schmidt. Completing her family, she joined the best two big brothers, Will and Patrick. During her far-too-short time in this world, Mattie inspired all who were lucky enough to know her with her kind heart. She was often silly, at times sassy, smart, compassionate, generous, and simply the happiest and bravest little girl. As the youngest sister and cousin on both sides, Mattie was incredibly wise beyond her years and brought her one-of-a-kind charm and grace to everything she did. She loved playing soccer, gymnastics, and softball through SYA, and would be the first to tell you how she was voted President of her class at the William E. Norris School. She liked riding her bike, scooter, and skateboarding around the neighborhood, swimming, tictoking, slime, art projects, often surprising those who she loved with her beautiful works of art. She also loved games, but you had to watch her because she would cheat at times. She was known for giving the best hugs that would always make any day brighter and loved spending time with our family at Lake Sunapee. In the winter, she would ski, and in the summer, she would tube, kneeboard, paddleboard, chase sunsets, and notoriously watch her own firework shows that seemed to get bigger every year. So it was at Lake Sunapee that Mattie completed her first 5K and inspired the idea behind Magic for Mattie. So Mattie's family, me and my sister and husband, and brothers and cousins, and aunts and uncles and grandparents who also live in Southampton, is forever grateful to the community that rallied behind Mattie at all of her events and throughout her fight against DIPG, which is a rare form of childhood pediatric brain cancer. So with that said, one of the things that has become so important to the family is to make this horrible situation mean more, mean something. Make her life, her short eight years, because it is true, Mattie is just one of those kids who touched people so much in the, in the eight years that she lived. So in the time since she's passed, we started this event called Magic for Mattie, and we've given away, if you look on that second page, we've given away over $100,000 already to various organizations. So some you can see on the list, but we've given $25,000 to the Chad Tough Foundation, $25,000 to the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia to support DIPG research, $25,000 was raised in memorial gifts to the Pediatric Palliative Care Team at Base State. We've also started a scholarship at Hampshire Regional and have so far raised $30,000. And each year, we'll be giving away a $25,000 scholarship to a Southampton resident that attend- sorry, excuse me, $2,500 scholarship. Thank you. Oh, that would be nice though. To a student who attended Norris School starting this May. We've raised $7,200 for Boston Children's, and then we've done various local sponsorships through the Hoyouk St. Patrick's Day Parade, the SYAA, and then a few local golf tournaments. You can see, I won't go into all of them, but we've had several community events in Mattie's honor to raise this money. And I can hand it over to Juliette to speak a little bit about the playground or answer any playground-specific questions that you have. Before I did that, I just, I do want to say, again, how grateful we are in the Schmitz and the Capshaws, the Schmitz, Mattie's parents, Nora and Greg, and the Capshaws, my husband Steve and I have been involved in this town. We've lived here for 14 years. The Schmitz have lived here for eight years, and so have served on various roles with the SYAA, the Norris PTO, I can go into all of it, but I think I've taken enough of your time, but I'd be happy to expound on it. And then also funded various construction projects at Norris, at Norris School, Labrie Fields, and Conant Park. So working with the Parks Commission and at times anonymously supplementing some of the funds for these projects have been involved in the community for several years. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, that was a wonderful presentation, thank you. Yeah, if anybody else would like to say something?
Good evening. My name is Juliette Locke, I am at 106 Crooked Legend Town. Been in town for about 15 years, and I have myself served on some boards, including Conservation Commission, PTO, SYAA, soccer board for many years. And not only am I a close family friend of the Schmitz and the Capshaws, but I helped lead a charge years ago to get funding for a preschool playground at William E. Norris Elementary School when I was on the PTO. My husband and I are both engineers in town, so it was, you know, easy for us to understand the process and to be the ones to lead that charge. So, you know, when the families approached me about, hey, do you think the town would support doing something like this in Mattie's memory? You know, it was just a wholeheartedly, we're going to give it everything we can. It's just really important to the families that her memory live on, and that's very clear through everything that they've given back. And it's been a very hard couple months for the family, you can imagine. So I don't have too much to add there. They're obviously amazing community members. But Mark has been very supportive through the process, and, you know, Mattie herself spent, so she's the little sister of one of my son's best friends. So I just remember years and years, we're at Labrie Field having soccer practices, and Mattie's running around, you know, watching her big brothers play soccer, her big brothers play baseball. She spent so many years at Labrie Field until she was then old enough to start playing soccer and baseball herself. You know, so we couldn't think of a better place than Labrie Field within this town to be able to, to build upon what's there and, and offer this extra amenity. We really think that it would serve the community and just be a wonderful location for Mattie's memory. We worked closely with Mark in deciding that since this master plan was already developed for that field, we worked within the existing footprint that they had previously. So it just helps keep that master plan in play for them, and it gave us a great starting point since we are, you know, moving fast. But we have gotten, I don't know if you had a chance to see the design, actually?
We actually have the copies of it, right?
Okay, fantastic, fantastic.
So I was going to say, we've, we've got the privilege of seeing the real, you know, the landscaping plan, the whole-
I assumed you had.
The whole drawing here, but maybe, maybe just for the audiences listening at home, if you'd just like to describe just some of the features that would be in the playground?
Absolutely.
What will it, you know?
So one of-
They'll see this later on, probably, but just hit the highlights if you'd like to.
One of the most difficult parts of Mattie's battle with DIPG was the last four to five months of her life where she was in a wheelchair. And she could no longer have full use of her body to enjoy things like a playground. But man, was she still there. She knew everything that was going on around her. And so it's, it's heartbreaking to see, you know, because obviously Mattie was fighting a battle, but there's other kids in town that have disabilities and that can't use the playground equipment that we have present in town. So we did take the time to visit a couple neighboring towns' facilities that offer ADA accessibility, and that was a very important piece to us when we were pulling together some of the information from the playground vendors to see what they could fit on this size site. And so what we have fit on there is a lengthy ramp that gets a child in a wheelchair high and up off the ground that they can, there's surface-level playing areas, like panels along the sides that they will be able to interact and play with, and get up to a deck where other children will be running around them. And there's also an ADA accessible picnic table proposed on site, which we are proposing like an asphalt-paved ramp so that it can be accessed from the parking area. And there is what is called a, I believe it's called an accelerator swing. A lot of people like to refer to it as like the bird's nest swing, but it's very popular in the, the ADA accessible world because it enables a child and their parent to sit on this swing together. And it's just a really, really cool feature that we're proposing and hoping that, you know, we come, see it come to life. So in addition to all the ADA features, there are some great climbing features that, if you could have seen Mattie in action, she was a climber, she would be up in the trees, she'd be swinging from all the monkey bars. So that was also an important feature to have on this playground. So there are some climbing features to get up to two slides and just a really cool, like, climbing structure that I think is just kind of classic playground. And we're just really excited, and we know Mattie would love it. And the other feature we're proposing is some landscaping because it's a fairly open field, and we want to be cognizant of the neighboring, neighborhood. And so we're providing some, or proposing some shrubs that would not require a significant amount of watering, right? But shrubs that would provide a little bit of a buffer and add some beauty to the area. And, and I guess the last piece I want to point out is one of the, the big things with playground equipment and mulch and landscaping, I'm sure you can imagine, things die, things break, you know, the mulch wears out. We, when we first met with Virginia and her committee, it was discussed about one of the ongoing services from the Magic for Mattie Committee that's led by the family would be to provide the upkeep as required for this playground. So that's very important to them, that this playground stay beautiful and not turn into something that's not cared for. You can tell by the numbers that Jen said that they're, they are raising, it's important for them to raise money to give back to the community. So there's no question that they will be able to fund the replacement of mulch in a few years, the upkeep of any plants that might not make it past the first year or two. And in addition to the funds we're requesting from the CPC, we're looking at approximately a $42,000 savings by volunteering Magic for Mattie handy individuals who-
Worker bees.
Worker bees to help with the installation. One of the big shock factors for us when we were going through this is obviously the cost of everything is increasing right now, but the biggest shock factor was the cost of installing a playground like this. And so the vendors typically offer you two paths for installation. One of them is we will install it 100%, or you find us X number of strong, able bodies and pull together what's called a community build day or two or three, and get it built under the supervision of a playground representative. So there's still a little bit of cost to that, but the difference in cost was $42,000. So we have chosen that option as we move forward. And I'm sure there's more information than you need, but just really wanted to make sure we have the support of the town, the committees, and express how much this means to Mattie's family.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, very thorough presentation, much appreciated.
Yes.
All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak? All right. Anybody from the board? Comment or two, anybody?
I have, I have two questions. I think it's more from Mark, though. You'll have to go to the podium if you don't mind. So I think when this, first of all, I totally support this, I think this is- I think this is a wonderful tribute to Maddie and her family. But the question I had is, um, two questions. One is, when you originally went out to bid for work, additional work on Labrie Field, um, everything came in too high, the decision was made to, um, hold off from doing anything. I thought that that funding did not include the playground, it included a fieldhouse and toilets and things. Can you just explain the different pots of money in terms of the CPC funding of these, yeah?
Sure. So, when we went out to bid in 2016, um, the playground was an alternate to the bid package. So that, um, when the bids came back and were opened, just for a fieldhouse, septic system, um, and utility connections to the building of water and electric and so forth, it came out $100,000 over our allotted budget. And that's without a playground. So, um, we've been, Park Commission has been struggling about trying to downsize things and, and figure out how to, you know, get something to, to be able to work. The CPC monies are still sitting there, and if we can figure out a way to make it all work, um, we'd be glad to build it.
Okay. So, this new approval from CPC is, wasn't included in the original package?
Correct. It wasn't included in the original.
For the utilities and the fieldhouse?
Correct.
Okay.
It was an alternate. If we were so lucky to have low bids, if we could afford it, we would.
Could have fitted in.
But, right.
And just one, one other question. Um, this is really just for people that would, I mean, I think I know the answer to this. What was the consideration to have it at Labrie versus Conant? Because I know you're looking at, uh, new playground equipment for Conant, and you're also in the middle of doing a master plan for...
Correct.
Um, Conant. But what, uh, who plays at, um, currently this various sports at, uh, Conant versus Labrie, and what was the reason for Labrie?
Well, different age groups play different. So, at Labrie Field, we have baseball, um, youth playing baseball. We have an adult league that rents, uh, the field for the springtime. We have soccer in the spring and fall. We were just talking about the applications that we have, and we have about 290 children within the applications that are going to use either play baseball or soccer. There's a lot of, lot of support.
So, the older elementary kids play?
So, typically, the older children play baseball at Labrie Field. It's a larger baseball field. Um, at Conant Park, it starts with T-ball and goes up from there to, they call majors, right?
Majors.
To majors, which is like...
Twelve years old.
Twelve years old?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And where do kids play softball?
And...
Norris.
At Norris, right. So, so the Park Commission doesn't have any, um, jurisdiction of the fields at Norris, that's the school. But, so there's also, you know, a large group at Norris that plays softball, um, for it. And then in the fall, we have soccer, a larger group of soccer, and we also have fall baseball that plays at, both at Conant Park and Labrie Field, um, and baseball and football. So, we have, we have the, a group of East Hampton Football League. Since the Whitebrook Middle School was demolished and reconstructed into the new school, um, we have been, um, working with the football team from East Hampton that have a lot of East, South Hampton kids, too, playing football, and they also practice and play football. Um, and they're going to do that again this year for practice, but the football field's completed in East Hampton, so their, their games will be in East Hampton, and they'll practice here.
Okay.
So, there's, you know, a variety of sports.
Very good. Both well-used by the sounds, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah. Any other comments, question? Anything?
Just from my own point of view, I would just like to commend everybody involved for the notion of doing an accessible, uh, playground. I mean, irrespective of the situation with Maddie personally in her last few months, I think that's just absolutely essential for anybody in, in, in the town, uh, to make this, you know, much more, uh, much more accessible for any kids in town or anybody who comes to visit. So, congratulations on even having that in your, your planning. I think that's very important.
Okay. I think that's all we have. If there's anybody else that would like to say anything in favor of that? No? All right. And just, yeah, well, just pro forma, I'll just go, is there anybody in the audience who would speak against this? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve this request?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, putting on the warrant for the annual town meeting. A request to name the playground at Labrie Field after Marty, Maddie Schmidt.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Motion's approved. So, this will also appear on the town meeting warrant for May 2nd, and we'll be having the town meeting at Norris School at, I believe at 7:00 PM on May 2nd, and that will be voted on by the residents. So, you'll have a chance to probably say a few words then at the meeting as well. Perfect.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. Much appreciated. All right.
There we go.
Very good.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed at about 6:35. Okay. Let us continue on with our regular business. And we have, uh, just jumping into new business tonight, we have no other interim things. We're going to focus on largely our budget, uh, meeting tonight and a couple of other things with our green community grant, uh, proposals, and a little bit on the town warrant. But let's, uh, jump into FY24 estimated revenues. No, that's fine. So, Ed, we'll kind of turn it over to you and Bradley and see where we are. I know we had a new spreadsheet that came out from Bradley this afternoon, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
I think it had a few updates, so maybe you could give us the highlights of what's changed since we met on Tuesday, I guess. Um, I know you were waiting for some figures from Norris School and insurance and a few other things perhaps at the time, or maybe the insurance had already been figured in, I'm not sure now. Um, but if we could, um, kind of give us the changes.
I can't, I can't remember if it was figured in for Tuesday night either.
I don't remember.
I don't think it was. So, a cou- couple of changes is, uh, did receive confirmation from, um, the central school office that the figures for the proposed enrollment for the vocational students had not changed, uh, from the preliminary, uh, numbers. Uh, number one. Number two, um, did receive our actual premium figures from Maya for both our workers' comp and general insurance. Uh, the good news there was actually our, uh, the one big claim we had that was sending our workers' comp claim, uh, risk soaring, uh, has run its course. So, um, actually on workers' comp, um, we have, uh, a $40,000 reduction from, uh, what fiscal year '23's premium, uh, was. Uh, on the general insurance and police and fire coverage, um, there was about $1,000 over what, um, I had originally estimated from the percentage they said to, uh, to cover.
So, just checking out where the workers, workman's comp is on this one, Bradley? This is where, so we had, last year was 80,000, is that right?
80,131.68.
And so, what we're really going to be down is about 30,000 this year comparatively?
Yeah. 50,763 dollars.
Right. Okay. Good.
And actually, actually, from what they had originally told me of expecting a 15% increase over, uh, last year, and that was where the placeholder was. So, that's where the $40,000 reduction comes.
We heard the less-than favorable news about the unrestricted government aid. Uh, is that, how much is that going to amount to? And it's not, it's not definite at this point, right?
No, it's one, one of three proposed budgets. Uh, I have not seen a matching, uh, shall we say, uh, cherry sheet estimate, estimate to go with the, uh, House, uh, proposed, uh, state aid, uh, which, in, in the House, they had, have proposed less unrestricted, uh, local aid than what the governor had proposed. We still don't know what the Senate will do. The good news on the, uh, the House, uh, version of the budget is the governor had proposed a 30-dollar minimum, uh, increase per student. Um, the House is proposing a $60 minimum increase per student. We're still lobbying for that to be, uh, $100 at this point in time, uh, minimum per student increase for Chapter 70.
Mm-hmm.
And then a couple, uh, one other, uh, change that I can remember from, um, the, uh, numbers you would have seen Tuesday night is, uh, the Finance Committee had caught a double entry on, uh, some, uh, debt interest. So, uh, 13,818 dollars, I believe it was, was the figure was in there in two different places. So, one of those has been removed.
Okay. 13,818 dollars. Oh, that was for the dump truck?
Yeah. Yeah.
I believe when we remove some old projects or debt and interests in this sheet, you encouraged me to do so because they were so old that the coding messed up and pulled this 13,818 from the dump truck here.
I see.
And it went to, uh, Norris Roof project or debt or interest. So, Finance Committee caught that and I removed it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And just on the unrestricted aid that it, from the notice we got, the governor had put in a 2% increase and then what the budget is now being shown as is a 1.6% increase. So, it's slightly less than what the governor had recommended, I guess, right? But we don't, we don't know, um, what that translates into really in terms of...
No, we won't know exactly until we actually get the cherry sheet estimates.
Correct. Okay. All right. So, and I think there was another question about the East Street Bridge that we had everything booked there for the incoming funds on the East Street Bridge?
Um, yes, we do.
Is that under the, I was trying to find it myself. So, is it under the grant section or where?
No, it would, it would now fall under, oh, I think you're talking about the actual Mass Works Grant.
Right. The million dollar.
Yes. We'll have, we'll have to research that to see where it actually came in. As I had a chance to go through all the emails of, uh, the reimbursement, uh, information that was requested and whatever, uh, at the end of fiscal year '22, it all seems to be there. Uh, whether the funds actually came in and got, uh, deposited into a different account than what we're looking at, we're not sure, but we will research that and find out.
It's Mass Works.
All right.
So... It received in fiscal year '22.
Could you speak a little louder, sir?
I'm doing journal entries to close fiscal year '22 right now, and I was looking at Mass Works Grant. We received 784,000 dollars for that. I'm not sure if that's related to the East Street Bridge.
784,000?
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Because we didn't find the million dollars anywhere. If it's...
So, it may be that they actually reimbursed in a couple of different amounts.
Mm-hmm. It might not have been one, one full reimbursement of a million.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Because we have a project in the capital, uh, capital, capital funds, but in other revenue, other special revenues, we received the Mass Works Grant. So, I'll have to look into that.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on some revenue issues, and then we'll get into some of the budget?
What about the comments that, uh, came in from the Finance Committee about the E and D at Hampshire Regional? That it can't be used to balance the FY24 budget? That it would be miscellaneous income and would have to be designated as free cash?
That's if it came in by cash. If, if they were to actually write us a check.
Okay. But it's not, the plan is to have it be a credit quarterly?
Add to our assessment.
I have a whole narrative that I can read, that I'm ready to read and make a motion on, on this subject.
And I, I did not see the particular comments you're, you're referencing.
I know, so I know that was one of the topics last night is, this can go multiple ways. If it comes down that they write a check and send us a, we have to record it as a miscellaneous receipt, and this year, we can't expend it, and we can't use it in the budget. It has to fall out through free cash certification next year.
Mm-hmm.
And then it could be appropriated. Versus the, the preferred method is, would be to take a credit against the budget. So...
A quarterly credit.
Well, that's what they're asking for.
Okay.
But, can I expand on it?
Sure.
All right. So, I even wrote this one out.
Okay. Thanks.
As we are aware, on March 20th, 2023, we received a communication from De- Deborah Wagner, Director of Accounts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, titled Excess of Deficiencies, where the, where as Director, she has issued a certification of Hampshire Regional School District to be $1,321,669, which represents a 9.39% surplus. The district can only retain the first 5% or 703,935, creating an excess amount of $617,734, which is required by law to be returned to the participating communities. Because 603 CMR 41 specifies per 4106 subsection 3, that if the certified balance exceeds 5% of the proposed budget, the Regional School Committee shall use the amount in excess of 5% as a revenue source for its proposed budget. Further, that under 4105, the Regional School District Budget H, the District Treasurer of the Regional School District shall certify and transmit the budget and the assessments to each member within 30 days after the school committee's adoption of the budget, and that as of today, well past the 30-day limit, no certification has been received by the District Treasurer. Hampshire Regional School Committee adopted its budget on March 6th. We are beyond the allowable time for any appeal. I believe our only option is to reduce the Hampshire Regional Budget Request to go before the town by our portion of the funds, which I believe should be based on the assessment that was used during that year to collect the funds, meaning that 56.7% of those funds belong to the taxpayers of Southampton. Of the 617,734, we should use that as an offset to this year's request. Therefore, I make a motion to reduce the initial request of 5,602,791 dollars by 350,387 dollars, taking the E and D percentage as a credit versus waiting for a check which would need to flow through and fall out as free cash in fiscal year '25. This makes the budget asked for Hampshire Regional go before the town 5,252,404 dollars.
I'll second that. Let's have some discussion, please.
Is there a downside?
Yeah.
Other than it not being clear what the budget numbers are, if you're simply just looking at the budget when budget time comes around again?
I think we need to remember a year from now that this credit's not going to be there.
Yeah.
And we need to make up for it. But, but secondly, they have a 30-day window to file their appeal. They had a verbal discussion with the DOR, the, and it was denied in an informal setting. They said they were going to move forward with appeal. To my knowledge, no request has actually been made. We're past the 30 days. We can't wait, and I know while some of them have all the best intentions of creating a stabilization fund and hoping that we'll vote to move this in there, the plan's not before us. We have to finalize our budget. It needs to go in. They want the credit in the, in Q4 versus, we propose quarterly. How we work the cash flow out to them, they're still only getting 5.2 million dollars. You know, if it's not even 25% each time because...
Right, right. They're still getting the budget that they voted on.
Correct. Yep. We're just, we're asserting ourselves and taking our credit. And I, I think after we do this, we should send our vote to the four other communities.
Yeah.
So, they do the same.
Yeah. I was just going to ask, uh, has anything been put out with the numbers, you know, from, from Hampshire Regional? As to the surplus and how it would be allocated to all the towns in totality, so we could see the whole picture?
No.
Now, can we do this independent, independently? Because let's say four out of the five towns, we're the fifth town, they decide, they're going to let them start this, you know, stabilization fund for, you know, the various, the three buckets that we're talking about. We're not going to be required to do that?
No.
As one of the, the fifth town in the district?
No, and they could only, right now, they could only do that with the surplus that they've built up over... they've built up over the multiple years.
So in this case, each town is on their own to decide how they, how to handle the excess?
Yep. In forty-one oh five, it, it reads that, um, if a local appropriating authority votes to appropriate a lower amount than the assessment as certified by the Treasurer, which never happened, such vote shall not constitute approval of the budget as submitted under the Regional School Committee. And it's, if they want to fight this, our vote says, we turn this down. You got to go back to the table and figure it out.
Okay, and it doesn't say that we not in support of the budget. It's, this is the only really recourse to be able to have the funds available for other departmental needs.
John, could you just read out the, the total budget for Hampshire again? Five million something?
It would, the end result?
Yeah, what we.
Five million two hundred fifty-two thousand four hundred and four dollars.
Okay, so that's what would be in our budget for Hampshire Regional?
Right, if my motion passes, we'll change it.
And which is it, Chesterfield or?
And the net savings, I know you said it's fifty-six percent, fifty-six point seven percent, no.
Fifty-six point seven was our assessment in that year. That year that those, that surplus was created.
Okay. And I, I don't know if it was Williamsburg or Chesterfield that had a huge percent increase.
Williamsburg.
Williamsburg.
And this would result in a hundred and eleven thou, a hundred and eleven thousand dollars going back to Williamsburg. And their huge increase was a hundred thousand.
Wow, interesting.
So then we would be reducing it by three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven is what you said, right?
Yeah, our number is three five oh, three eight seven.
Okay. Ed, any thoughts, questions about this? Any impact that you can see about this in terms of following up the suggestion here to just take it as a credit for next year rather than?
No, I think it absolutely is the best option, yeah. And the only, only thing that I've pushed back on so far is, uh, their first correspondence with us is that, okay, we'll give it to you in the fourth quarter. I could have been a little rough trying to get to the middle ground and said, we'll take it in the first, but I said, well, how about just in equal parts over the four quarters? So I know they're considering that right now. I haven't had, received a yes or a no to, uh, that, but I think it's the fairest way.
And I, sorry, I would suggest too that assuming this passes, that we take this excerpt and we email the superintendent and let her know that this happened.
Yeah.
So if they want to push back, they've got what, two meetings left?
Right, right. Yeah, I was just about to say, I'm assuming this is not a surprise to, to them. They know that we've been asking to.
It was discussed last night at the local school committee.
Okay, yeah.
Do they have the ability as a school committee to go ahead and approve the creation of these stabilization funds and sort of have a, uh, sta, you know, standoff of sorts? You know, we, you know, some people might support that, keep the money, other people might, I mean, is, is it ever going to come to like this or that? Or once we approve the budget, I mean, obviously people in this town hall floor can, uh, do whatever, but I mean, do you see the school committee actually moving forward with their original plan?
I, I see them creating the stabilization accounts, but I see the funding source being the two point three million dollars in reserves they've already built up over the past ten years.
Five percent.
I mean, so, right, the other side of this is if we look historically, they're historically between three and five percent under spending. So meaning there's that much fat in the budget every year.
And certainly other towns were worse off in a way in terms of their assessment comparatively than, than we are. So I would, I would be surprised if towns would not sort of follow.
Right.
Follow our lead on this recommendation. I'd be amazed if they didn't, honestly, in many ways, but.
All I can say is it couldn't come at a better time. But what you're saying is, is true, is this may be a one-time thing, so.
Next year.
Be aware of that for next year.
Right.
That's, that's serious, but great.
If there's no further discussion, I think we have a motion and a second. Yeah?
Yep.
All right, could I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Hearing no opposition, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so, next.
So would you like Bradley to make that change to the budget file?
Yes.
Yeah. Yep, let's see what, what that's going to.
The impact, yeah.
What the impact is going to be, what that's going to help us do, if anything?
What would that be?
Hampshire Regional.
Three hundred and fifty thousand? Three fifty, yeah.
That would almost make.
We're changing.
More of a balanced budget.
Yes, we're changing that number right there, the five billion six oh two, to this five million two fifty-two four oh four.
For five students?
Yeah, well, it's times nineteen, so a hundred thousand. Yeah, and actually, Ed, yeah, just remind me, just to, for clarity, just so that I remember this, that you mentioned that the Voke Ed enrollment had, or the, yeah, the enrollment for Voke schools had not changed from the original estimate, which was, was it twelve, was it, students or, there's twelve graduating?
Twelve graduating, the, uh, applications to enter, uh, the freshman class are at seventeen, so that's an additional five students.
Okay. So how are we budgeting and did we, didn't we level it, level fund it last week at twelve?
We had moved it to level funding, so.
And that's where we will leave it right now or is it better to build in one or two extra students at the nineteen thousand?
I want to go back and take, take a look and see where we are right now to see if we're showing maybe a little surplus there or are we behind? I would probably feel more comfortable if we are right on the target or a little bit behind probably budgeting at least one more student. If, if we have a little surplus there, I'd probably be comfortable with what we've done to level fund.
Okay, because I mean, I guess I'm assuming and based on past history, we wouldn't necessarily count that all seventeen would actually finally go, right?
That's correct.
We tend to not usually take that maximum number per se as we know right now.
Correct.
Sort of feels like, you know, we might need a, a student's worth or something as wiggle room, maybe, but.
Right.
I think it's.
Right, and then.
Valid point, yeah.
Yeah, and then the other thing is too, right, if, um, there may, say a hundred percent go and now we're, we don't have enough money in there, we have enough money in theory to get started. And then once, that, that might be, once the free cash comes around next year. Because it would have to go back to the town, right? The town would have to vote, extra money.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Can I ask another question that came up by the Finance Committee and that was about the cannabis, um, funds? Did you see the question that was raised about that?
No.
Oh. Was that discussed last night or with the Finance Committee?
Yes, they talked about it, it was zeroed out, but I, I remember us talking about it here and I thought the reason why we, it was zeroed is the TA thought because of pending legislation.
Oh, right, right.
That it might not be a.
He felt certain that it was.
It's the impact fund that, yeah, that we may not be able to benefit from.
You still feel that way? I don't know, I haven't been following it, whether there's been a change.
It's a risk one way or the other. The current, and it, and, and there's a piece of it that goes beyond that too. The current operation doesn't feel they should pay, uh, they haven't paid the last quarter. So there's two pieces of, of the puzzle.
The, the company hasn't paid the last?
They haven't paid the last quarter because they think that it's going to disappear. There are operations out there that are contemplating suits against the communities that have host agreements for funds that they have paid in the cases where there really isn't any additional cost to the community for doing that. So, um, there's a risk there. I really don't know what.
How about the fact that we have a contract with them that laid out certain expectations and they're not being met?
That's one side of it. And then there's another side too.
Yeah.
If you look around, the market is getting oversaturated. So with that, there are operations closing. So I'll, I'll ask the question, is a community better off with a functional established operation and getting the three percent from the sales tax or not having any operation at all and getting zero dollars or zero percent? So those, those, and like I say, it's a risk, you can do either. I'm, I'm kind of risk averse, so, you know, my recommendation was to leave it out. You can put it back in.
Yeah, wasn't there a fair amount of money in there already?
So we have, so that is, it's a little fuzzy, I'm embarrassed my glasses are fuzzy, but it looks like thirty thousand in there for the cannabis impact fee? So does that represent what we've actually collected?
That was what this year's budget was for. We've already received fifteen thousand of the thirty.
But don't they have to produce financial reports for, to the town so that you can verify what the revenue is?
They do.
And they do?
Yes.
Okay, and you're, you're pretty com, I mean.
Do we have, do we have any?
For the, well, for all the payments we've received, we have those reports, yes, correct.
So we still have thirty thousand dollars up there or we don't?
Right now it's at zero. And like, like I say, it's, it's one of those risks. If you tell me you want to put it back in, we can put thirty thousand dollars back in. The Cannabis Commission will not make their final ruling until November.
Okay, so we, um, let's see, we have existing funds in that account, correct? That, we, we haven't spent anything from that account, correct? I know there's a.
It's not an account, that's general fund.
It's general fund.
It's revenue.
So it could be used, we're talking about doing some education and all that, I understand that.
Yeah, it's a different one, it's a different fund.
Okay, yeah, there are two funds. One is the impact fee and the other one was the flat education fund, I think fifteen thousand dollars or something? Anyway, my point is, are funds available if we need them to cover any expenses in the FY twenty-four budget?
That would be a future.
What have we?
Revenue, so I can, I can either tell you that there may be or I doubt there will be.
Revenue, I'm talking about what we already have in the bank.
We've got fifteen at least.
But is it, is it in a designated special account?
Fiscal year twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-four hasn't gotten here yet.
Using what we already have to pay any expenses, you know, I'm just talking about like Sharps, Sharps is an example, we're paying for Sharps. That could be justified as an expense that was coming from, you know, we're trying to offset expenses. Do we have funds from the cannabis, cannabis fund to cover any FY twenty-four expenses?
No.
Why not?
Because we've either had twenty-two or twenty-three revenues. This is a general fund revenue, so it is accrued and expended in that year. So we have nothing for twenty-four.
Okay, now, if there, if you said that the Cannabis Commission is going to make a decision in November, would we even get partial funding from, until November?
I can't answer that. Like, like I say, right now, it's the business's position that they don't owe it because of the previous.
Right, other, have they communicated to that, uh, that comment to us in writing yet? Or is it just, just a talk?
It's been verbal.
Right, so they're in breach of the agreement and their position is that they don't owe it. So we either just accept it and we're done or we enforce the agreement.
Right.
Step one. Step two is, we have an agreement in place that says this is supposed to come in. Commission's not going to vote on this or take it up one way or the other until November thirtieth. So I guess we got to answer question one first, is, do we as a select board want to enforce the agreement? Move to enforce the agreement? I, I would lean towards yes because the second part is part of the existing budget that we have right now, that we built it on, right? We built it on thirty thousand, they've only paid fifteen.
But, but what are we getting in on sales tax to, I mean, is the sales tax coming?
Sales tax is separately, is separate.
No, but is that more than what we would be getting for the impact fund? I mean, you were, if I was hearing you right, it was like.
We would, we would be getting, and it depends on sales, but for basically, whether you call it the last, well, I'll say the last four quarters, uh, that would be about sixty thousand, fifty-eight, sixty thousand dollars.
And we only lose that if they close.
Correct.
Right.
Right. So they'd have to surrender their license and close. So I think at the very least, we should send a formal letter of complaint to the Cannabis Commission. That here's the agreement, they, I mean, I guess first, no, I'm sorry, first, we need to formally send a letter to the occupant and saying, it is our understanding that you are refusing to pay this in honor of the agreement, is that correct? Please answer in writing. They write back, yes, it is. We take that, we send it off to the Cannabis Commission and ask them to investigate it. They may write back and say, we're taking this up in November, we're not going to do any action between now and then. Okay, fine, we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
But they're in breach of the contract for the, for the period.
Right now.
Covered, yes. So regardless of the decision in November, there's still that fifteen thousand dollars.
Is there a way to show us from the end of FY twenty-two what we had collected for the impact fund, impact fee?
Yes.
I mean, we've had at least one year's worth of the contract, right? There should be at least ten thousand dollars in there, right? That we had collected at that point in time?
But this, this thirty, but this thirty thousand comes in as a general fund receipt. So it just gets deposited into the general co, fund and if we don't spend, it falls up, forget, we don't trace it separately other than recording its source, which you can go to that.
Right.
That comptroller.
But per the contract, doesn't it have to be ten thousand?
Can you finish what you were saying? So it falls off where?
It's a, it's a general fund receipt.
So it falls off in free cash if it's not used?
Right, along with everything else in there.
Right.
But I'm guessing, Bradley could validate this, since we have it as a line item receipt coming in, when the receipts do come in, they must be posting to an account that we could see historically what's come in.
I've, I've seen it recorded.
Yep.
Yeah, we've seen it, that's what I was asking, we're, what have we received thus far in terms of?
I thought it was at least thirty thousand dollars.
It's probably more than that because I believe they opened in like June of twenty-two. So we could go back and maybe it was June of twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, I would think.
Yeah, I think it was twenty-one.
So. You don't have a.
I had the contract here.
I'm looking at the contract right now. Well, so it says ten thousand dollars for the substance use disorder treatment programs and that's for, quote, the term of the agreement. And then for five years, it's a three percent.
Tax.
Impact fee.
Correct.
Oh, impact, yeah, right.
So I'm just looking at the date that this was signed, to see where we're at. This is signed.
It was signed in twenty-one or something, maybe?
How can there not be a date on this?
There's got to be. Nineteen, first paragraph, nineteenth, August ninth, August twentieth, twenty nineteen is when we entered into the agreement, but they didn't open right away. So there was a delay there, right?
Right, because they had to get licensed.
Right, so the annual community impact fee is three percent of the gross sales according to this, right?
Correct.
And it's four or five-year period, according to the contract.
Fiscal year twenty-three was the first time we could budget and estimate the revenues for cannabis. So twenty-two, I believe everything went to this cannabis tax account. So we received forty-eight thousand in fiscal year twenty.
That should just be the tax.
But there is an impact, there's a community.
So that's not the, that's not the educate, the ten thousand?
Impact fee, I don't know what that is.
That's it, that's what they're talking about. So for, in, uh, what Bradley's got here, what was received during fiscal year twenty-two, which by, should have been three quarters, I believe, was forty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventeen cents.
And that's both funds, the ten thousand plus the three percent?
No, that's just the three percent.
Do we have a separate line for the ten thousand?
We should.
So the tax is one thing, that's separate.
So if we wanted to, um, if we needed to use any of that money, if we could do a line item transfer between now and mid-July if we needed to, to offset something, right? I mean, the funds are available to us in this fiscal year and you said there's only fifteen thousand instead of thirty, right?
That money's already been allocated through the budget process, just like real estate taxes, state aid.
All right, so it's, it's not sitting there.
No, it's not sitting there and available, no.
Right, then how is the, so are we talking about letting, having the Board of Health and these people that are putting together some education, is that for the next fiscal
Is that for the next fiscal year, and it would have to be budgeted in order to be able to be used?
That would actually come out of that $10,000 fee or any of the opioid fees.
Okay.
That is, that is separate.
Wherever it is, okay.
So if I'm getting this right, you said that they were behind on the last payment. So the October to December payment was due by February 1, and that's what hasn't been paid?
Correct.
And then the next one is sales between April and June, and that's, I'm sorry, January and March, and that is due on or before May 1st?
Correct.
The next payment.
I agree with John. I think it, you know, we have a contract, and nothing's happened at the legislative level, or I think, you know, I would support sending a letter saying, basically, according to the contract, this was due upon receipt.
Yeah.
But you were saying, send something to the Cannabis Commission.
Well, yeah, but first you got to get in writing from them that they're refusing to pay it.
Okay, yeah.
I think we need to contact the owner of the business first, and do that kind of letter, saying, you know, under the contract, we're requesting, you know, the payment as scheduled.
Yeah, and we could, we could even say in there, you know, if you do not respond to this letter within 15 days, we will escalate to the commission.
Yeah.
Okay. So could I have a motion, maybe, that we have the town administrator draft a letter to that effect?
Uh, yes. I'll make a motion that the town administrator draft a letter to the owner of Dreamer, who is Vulcan, it was Vulcan LLC, regarding payment that was due on February 1st.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
And by the way, it places a closing. They're probably doing better, not worse.
So now, part two.
Part two. I was going to ask, so is there something?
Are we leaving the 30,000 as zero, or are we putting something in?
Feels like zero's a little too drastic. Couldn't we put in something?
You want to put in the 15?
I would favor 15 anyway.
Yeah, but if, well, I mean-
I mean, I don't know. We got, what, we got 43 last year, and that was representative of 3%.
Three quarters.
So that really is pretty low, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. And I really think that it would go into effect sometime after the Cannabis Commission would make their decision. So we should get some partial money.
Right, right, right.
So I think we're safe putting in.
So if we're saying they're going to rule out in November, that's what, five months?
Mm-hmm.
So they'll take the 30,000 divided by 12 multiplied by 5 to come up with a prorated number.
I mean, you could also look at it this way, is the payment for the fourth quarter that-
Fourth quarter, yeah.
April, May, June, isn't due until, like, July. And then that next quarter is due, I think it's October, if I'm correct. So you could say, okay, theoretically, we should be due two quarters.
All right, so 15.
Yeah, because the next one is due May 1st. So, yeah, I mean, we're behind one, and then one is about ready to be due as well.
I think probably, I would support probably 15, because if something drastic happens, I can't imagine they're going to not-
I mean, I just don't think the Cannabis Commission-
They're going to backdate this?
Yeah, I can't imagine the legislature's going to move very fast on any of this, but I could be wrong.
It's not the legislature, in this case, it's the Cannabis Commission.
Right. Are you comfortable with having it be at 15?
What's that?
Are you comfortable with it being at 15?
I'm, I'm comfortable with do whatever the select board is comfortable doing. So, I mean, whether at this 15, 20, 25, 30 again, whatever you feel comfortable with.
So, let me, the money that comes in to us that's from, from the DOR, that's called, it comes in on the same receipt as the meals tax.
Right.
So is that the 3% sales tax?
Yes.
That's the 3%?
That's our local 3% sales tax.
Correct. So if I go back, so first quarter of last year, there were 14,300. Then we got 14,800. The last payment we got in March 31st, which we'll eventually see in our revenue reports, that's a little dig, was 18,600. So if that's 3%, in those nine months, they've generated over $1.6 million in sales. They can pay our fee, that's under agreement. Because they're growing. They're selling more, they're growing. They're selling more, right? Their sales are increasing based on the tax that's being collected.
In this time, since this agreement came out, they have two other facilities.
Reports that they sent in.
Right, but to the point of, I don't see that, I mean, if that's only for nine months, right, you could extrapolate that and say it's a $2 million operation, I don't suspect they're going to close the doors, because we're asking them to honor their contract and pay the other $15,000. I'm just saying, the risk of them saying, "No, we're just going to close and leave because the area's saturated," are you going to walk away from 2 million from Southampton?
Well, surrounding-
Or do you, or do you move to a neighboring community not far away?
True.
Well, here, this business already has a place in Northampton on, below the restaurant that he owns, and he also opened up that Budsy place. So he's got two other places he owns.
And they also have the delivery.
That's Budsy.
Budsy?
Yeah.
The other one's called Honey, and it's in Northampton.
I mean, I'd favor putting in at least 15. I mean, I, you know, I'd be happy with 20, frankly, but I don't know if that's being too optimistic.
I mean, it, to me, if you're going to do 15, I'd do 20.
Yeah.
That's just my thought.
Yeah, I'd go 20. Let's make a nice round number.
1995.
All right.
Let's put in 20.
20, okay.
But then we'll, we'll ask that we get that letter out and let them realize that we'd like to hold them to their agreement, okay?
So then, I'm sorry, can you go back?
Yeah.
Back up, Bradley. And I don't know. Okay, so you have the cannabis tax there, and where are you, at 65,000?
Above that, 65, right?
Yeah.
I can't see it.
Is that the-
I don't know if you can make that a little bit, yeah.
There, that's clear enough, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So 65 is the cannabis tax estimate, estimator, yeah?
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Where did the total number, where is it right now? Seems like it's less.
Which?
The, is that the yellow one there?
No, it's way down.
Way down. Is it still 19, okay, yeah. Did you already sum it?
Are we really still that far apart? That seems like it's growing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I thought we were getting closer.
And that's what the-
That's the revenue side.
I know.
Let revenue to go up.
Yeah, but is it-
You want it to go up.
Yeah.
But that's with the reduction in the school assessment?
Yes. No, that wouldn't show up there.
No, it would show up at here.
Not in the revenue, no.
No.
But on the gap, the gap would look less than if the expenses-
Okay, so in relation to budget one, so that was just the revenue side. So now, as we plug that figure in, right, toward our-
Yeah, we're favorable by 71,000 right now with no wage increases.
Okay.
Our estimate was 27,000, so we're-
And in budget, can somebody just remind me, in budget one, where's the fire department? Level funded from the year before, or some changes, or what?
On the fire EMS tab.
Is it, is it, it was level funded, the right, or I'm just-
No, we had gone back in and made some adjustments to it, so. Could you pull up the fire EMS tab, please?
We're $70,000 off?
To the good.
Not including the wage.
We have surplus.
So, no, we're, no, 71,000. So it's about $100,000 altogether, with the predicted wage increases.
Hmm.
Really? So we have to close the $100,000 gap?
No, 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 we're to the good.
All right, that's what I thought. Yes, that's what I thought.
So for fire EMS-
Yep.
The budget one tab is 753, 846, 92.
Yep.
It's an increase of 29, 253 over the current fiscal year. Now, that does not include, I think I just got to do this, because we don't have the model like we do with the other employees that gave Bradley the direction to do that exercise. So what we did was, fire wages are currently 146, 175 in the tab one. EMS are 366, 076, 33. If the select board were to say here, because you don't have a model to follow, we want to do a 2% COLA, that would go to 149, 099, 08, and that would go to 373, 397, 86. And at a 3% increase, it would go to 150,000, 560, 84, and 377, 058. My memory was, it was like 11%, or not 11, about $11,000 at the 2% level, and 15 at the 3% level. And that doesn't mean that those are the only two. You know, it could be two and a half.
Yeah.
You know, it could be one and a half. I just picked those two.
Okay.
Just for model.
So my other, my other two questions, as it relates to the fire, is, back on revenue, what is our placeholder for ambulance, use of ambulance receipts? Is it 100 or 125?
I thought it was 150, but I could be wrong.
150?
Speak towards the bottom, right?
Yeah.
Right around there somewhere?
125.
All right, 125. And then, to date, well, are those-
That should go a little higher.
But Bradley, your ambulance receipts, are those, do you have those beyond December?
No.
No.
Under 45,000 as of December 31st.
145, okay.
That's pretty safe, then. Very safe, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but didn't they also have, like, a carryover that we balanced, that we hadn't used in the, from '22, that we didn't use in the '23 budget?
That would come, yeah, come in after we close the books, yeah. Because my thought, my thought process here is, you know, I kind of like the idea, you know, whatever's in there, we move it forward. If there's 145 now, roughly, you could say that's going to double, because it's six months. We're going to, we're only going to use 125. We're going to leave 20 there, so we'd have 165 at the end, plus whatever carryover there is. Let's just say, for sake of argument, it was 35,000, at least 200,000 there. Should we go the avenue of having the study, and it comes back and says we need more money, because we got to add more people, or whatever the case is, we've got that available pool to go back to after, because I still don't think we can solve this issue before the budget.
Yeah.
And also, just as we drive some of these other numbers off, I will just let you know that I, on purpose, drove the motor vehicle excise tax number probably past where I felt comfortable.
It's about 70,000 from prior year.
Did you bottom out the boat excise?
Yes, that's, we're in a longer plucking line.
I actually still have to, I have to check with legal counsel on that, because at least DOR asked us to take a look at that, because they don't think it's legal to just forego.
Zero it?
Yeah.
So why did you go up 70,000 on the excise tax?
Let's look at '23 so far.
Well, we won't have '23 so far, because the bills don't start coming back until March, or the payments. So we had, let's see, if I can remember, and I'm doing this by memory, I think, if my memory's correct, we had about, yeah, we had $1,001,350 last year. However, about $200,000 of that was not associated with the fiscal year '23 actual excise tax. So, I mean, is the 1,050 below that? Yes, but I also don't know how much is still hanging out there in some of those overdue accounts.
Yeah, so some of those were late payments or whatever.
Can I go back to the ambulance one for a second? So what did you put right now for ambulance?
Right now, it's at $125,000.
And you were just saying that you expect possibly another six months' worth of ambulance receipts. So would the, and I think, John, you were saying with the assessment, or the potential assessment of the fire department, we would then have money available if we need it, for what? Can you just explain what you were just talking about? I'm just curious.
Well, from my point of view, is if the assessment comes back and says, like, one of the things, right now, we, the current, the current fire chief is of the belief, has the working motto that he needs a paramedic on every single shift across the board. That may or may not be the recommendation. That's the most expensive recommendation there is, other than going permanently full-time employees, right? So if the, I don't know, because again, I, if you have one paramedic, and the, you know, Northampton's hiring a paramedic right now, firefighter slash paramedic, at $29.67 an hour. So that's what they're hiring for. Now, those are permanent, so they're below, you could probably come down a little bit, but just call it $29. So one paramedic on, around the clock, is 168 hours a week, times 52 weeks, times $29, there's not enough wage in there to do that. So if that ends up being the recommendation, we're going to be short. We're going to need more money. So I'm thinking, if we're sitting on 200 or 225 in ambulance receipts, that can be the funding source of a special town meeting down the road after the assessment has happened.
Yeah, we can't just hold that. I mean, that has to be allocated.
No, no, no.
Okay.
But we also, just to refresh your memories, and I know you've heard this before, and you may remember it, so we can only appropriate from those ambulance receipts what we actually have available. We can't, it's not like, oh, we're going to get $200,000 of revenue from this during fiscal year '24, and DOR won't allow us to use that. And then one other thing to keep in your back, back of your mind is, traditionally, we've used 100,000 here. We can go over that this year, because-
There's no ambulance.
There's no ambulance, but I will also say this, please remember, there's also an ambulance stabilization account. So, you know, one of the other factors is you could take 25, 50, or $75,000 and put it into that ambulance stabilization account, so it's available when the next ambulance is purchased.
Is that the only use of those funds? Once they go in the ambulance stabilization fund, they can only be spent on a physical asset? Is that how that was set up?
You love to ask me questions you know I'm going to have to really do some research on. I believe so, but, you know, I would caveat my answer with, I would do some further research, but I believe, yes, that's, I believe that's how that stabilization fund was set up specifically for the purchase of future ambulances.
So how much are we budgeting, then, for ambulance receipts for FY '24?
125.
125, okay.
Like I said, if you wanted to bump that, you could.
Yeah.
Just from what I've seen, but like John says also, is stay conservative in-
Right, okay.
For special town meeting, and leave something there, too.
Yeah, it was the special town meeting and the allocation piece that I, I wasn't sure if there was a way that we could use the funds more immediately if the assessment sure if there was a way that we could use the funds more immediately if the assessment came back that we needed to do something. We still have to go to a town meeting to-
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Correct.
So going back to when you had the bottom line revenue, in terms of how far we are apart then between revenue and expense for FY '24?
Yeah, right now, we're at 71,000 to the good, 71.7.
Okay.
Now, even though it's in the parentheses.
Yeah, and just, and just could you clarify, because it's above the 27, does that include the 27 or not?
No.
No.
No. So could, could, yeah, could you do that math like two cells down?
Yeah. And so we've already entered the credit for Hampshire Regional, right?
Yep.
So the, okay, and we've already accounted for the VOK students, right?
I might feel comfortable adding one more at 19,000.
And that 27, 635 placeholder there is what we believe, the exercise of using the steps?
Of using them.
Correct, and one of my exercises for this weekend is to actually calculate each line account to see-
To apply to each line.
Yeah. Howl comes back to that.
I thought the number was, you said 2% was this and the steps was this, I thought it was something closer to 40-something thousand.
I think what you probably remember is the 27-
Yeah.
Plus either the 11 or 15 for fire EMS.
So that was going to be my question, where did the fire EMS went in?
Right, that's not in there either.
Not in there, right?
So that was the next thing, I was going to ask the select board if they had some direction and we could, you know, two, three, two and a half, one and a half, six, and then we could actually plug that into this formula too.
I think before we look at expenses and wish lists and everything else, I mean, it's such a small amount of money anyway. It might be useful for us to have a discussion around where our priorities are. For me, it's employees getting some increase, for sure. That's just my opinion.
So we have a surplus here of what?
70.
I can't see. In scenario.
71.
Yeah, this is, this is the fire budget, fire EMS budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
71.7.
So we have a surplus of 44,000.
71.7.
That includes, that includes the scale.
You got, you-
It includes the scale, not the fire EMS.
But still got to plug in fire EMS here.
Fire EMS wages. It includes the scale for everybody else.
Okay.
But not the fire EMS.
All right.
So could we manage a 2.5%? I mean, there's no, there's no scale to go on.
I want to pull up the scale because I think there, I think there is one on the fire department.
Is there? Okay.
But you're going to have to give me a minute to find it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's just calculate what the 2.5 is, just while we're doing it.
That would be, yeah, that would be a good, good way to look at it.
So, as opposed to the steps?
They don't fall into the model we created for everybody else. Fires always had their own-
They don't, but they, but they do have steps in a scale.
Right.
Theirs is just, it's not an annual, it's after two years, you move up a step and then for those two years, you're at that spot. So zero to two, you get one number, three to four, you're at this number, five to seven years, eight to 10 years, 11 to 14 years.
And it has nothing to do with how often they work?
No, it's based on the years that they've been.
So if they work two years, two weeks a year, they, they get credit for that, wow.
That's what the scale says.
Well, it goes back to that. Wonderful thing of someone that's been in the position for 10 years, do they have one year's experience 10 times or do they have 10 years' experience?
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
Yes, same thing with-
It has to be out.
Right. As if they've been there two years, but they've only worked 10 shifts, you know.
And plus they're getting the bulk of it from their home, home station, right?
It wouldn't be hard to figure that out.
I think that would be really tough to-
That's a tough one, yeah, it really is.
Because, I mean, that's, yeah, I think that would be hard.
Because, you know, when you, when you look at payroll, you look at timesheets, I mean, there are many, many blanks there for weeks on end.
Yep.
Of people who don't, are not called in or they can't report in.
So the steps-
To chalk that up as experience, it's-
Yeah.
It's hard.
But the steps, I mean, the formula that was, that was derived last year, we obviously don't have the study yet, but that accounted for every unique position and where they were-
Right.
Above and below, and people that way below, was it 12% or something? So that formula is what you're preferring to, it's higher, the amounts are higher, and that's preferred over a flat percentage for each position, correct?
That was, yes, it was a higher amount and the select board at the last meeting came back and said we prefer to use-
The higher one, okay.
To follow the model we set up last year.
Okay.
And so that is that 27,000 thereabouts.
Yeah, correct.
I don't know, I mean, I personally think, without even seeing this scale, that I think this becomes very hard to manage a separate scale and figure out, you know, what's going to be fair, using that, because, you know, given the different, you know, the variations of when people work and so forth, it's probably going to be easier just to apply a flat percentage.
But if you look at the scale here, it's like 70, 80 cents an hour difference from one step to the, to the next. I mean, it's not huge amounts.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure, yeah. But, I don't know, it seems like it would be easier to apply if we just did a percentage, whatever that percentage was.
Right, and this is what John has, you know, come back to, said at the past is, okay, well, you gave everybody else a 2%, but, you know, my EMS or fire wages didn't go up by the matching colas, so.
So I think we've got a choice, 2% or 2.5 or?
I'm, I'm okay with the 2%. Again, I think, I think this particular department is going to look 180 degrees different a year from now, once we go through the whole study and that. I do like the idea of giving something, you know. The-
We're talking, you know, a couple thousand dollar difference between 2 and 2.5?
I would, I'd be in favor of 2.5.
That's fine. I mean, I'm, you know, anywhere in there, I don't, just, let's pick a number.
Yeah.
What do you guys want?
Well, let me just ask, back to that formula, everybody did a lot of work on that formula, and I think part of it was to actually get people to where, closer to where they need to be. So does that process continue? I mean, we're not talking about everybody on that particular form, but the formula getting a 2 or 2.5% raise, it's based on, some people were at the very high end, and so they're, what would they get versus somebody that continues to be below the range for their position? Is that, are we still working on that scale to get people jumped up if necessary?
I think we said when they were at the max, we would, they would get the col.
Okay.
There would be no more steps to go. But I'm just using 2.5 because I don't know if 2.5% increase is more than what it would be if we were to follow these steps.
Right, that's what I was, I just want to make sure that there's some parity, I guess.
Well, and to come up with the, the 27,000 that you came up with following the model, you must have gone back through each of the positions, right, to calculate those, those differences, right?
Right.
So.
I use last year's file, I looked at all the employees that have an impact on the general budget that aren't going through fund, grants or anything else, and I confirmed their hourly rate or salary, how many hours they worked in the week, and I bumped them up the next step, and I got my total.
Now worked out to be what percentage of an increase overall, generally?
Do you know what percent increase that put people at from where to where? Was it like some were getting less than 2, some were getting?
It was whatever that step was.
Based, compared to the 2% increase, everyone was getting more money.
Right, because the 2% calculation was somewhere around 14 or 11,000 dollars.
I think it was like 16.
Yeah, so I mean, this is adding another 11,000.
This is much better.
Yeah.
Well, Bradley, you just said, except for people that are like grant funded, so there's some COA positions that are grant funded, does that include them?
No, because the grant funding doesn't come from the operating budget.
Okay.
I mean, they would still be eligible to move-
Yes, yes, okay.
But it's not impacting-
Right, it's still getting, that's the main thing, okay.
And while we're having this conversation, before I forget, because if I wait two minutes, I will remind the select board that when the building inspector actually was certified as a building commissioner from our hiring offer, he was, he is to get a 5% increase. I still need to go back because he got it partway through this year and figure out what that difference is for this year, but that will carry forward to next year.
Okay, so make it, make a note there somewhere that we don't forget that, Bradley, calculate building commissioner.
Does that impact you too, Bradley? There was something in your contract too, but it wasn't going to happen in a year, it took more than that.
I think it's-
Well, his, his will be interesting because it says the same cola as any other non-union people.
Yeah.
So I will take a look at where, I will take a look at where he was on that scale for last year compared to what a step would be for next year. And I'll bring that back to the select board.
Okay. Well, I'm fine, if it's, if everybody is at a minimum getting 2 or, between 2 and 3, then I'm fine with the 2.5.
Okay. Well, wait a second, if Francine comes back before we vote on that, or we need to vote on that?
I think she was, she was, if you, if you're going with 2.5, I think she's good with that.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that, or do you?
Let's use the 2.5 number.
Yeah. We can put in the-
12-806.
As they're still discussing, would you put in another column and calculate out that, oh, you're already, you're quick.
Got the 2.5, yep.
And that comes to 12,000 and?
806.
Okay, and so if you would take that 12-80630 and please put that over into those calculations so the select board can see where they are now. And I'm going to take a quick three-minute break too. Sorry.
So we're down to 50,000 thereabouts, right? 36, 71.
So before, I mean, I'm not saying we need to talk about it right now, but at some point tonight, can we figure out whether or not, if we know, if we're going to use any ARPA funds to offset here? For, for example, I think, I think there's some placeholders we should put into the budget.
Yeah, no, we do, I think so too. I think we need to go, if we're done, once we get done with this, then I think we go back into the, you know, the whole budget, you know, without looking at department levels. I mean, some of these things that we have taken, we've basically taken budget request number one, I believe, but I think there are some items in budget two-
By department.
In certain places that might need to shift in here that we haven't really had a chance to look at.
Yep.
You know, so I think we need to just go through and double check if there's something in somebody's request two that ought to be in our budget, because I don't know if we've-
Since we're talking about wages, I'm just curious, it came up, Bradley, about your situation where you are one hour short per week in terms of the retirement, can you explain that? And is anybody else in this town in the same boat?
It's just if I work 35 hours a week, I'd be considered a full-time employee by-
The retirement board?
Retirement board. So currently, I'm at 34.
But your salary, I mean, we didn't really, I mean, aren't you?
What do you mean?
I mean, even when we raised, you know, like, all the financial team's salary, I mean, the, everybody's salary except for the health director, correct? So why, why is it, why does it come down to hours then?
It's just their factor, what they determine to be full-time.
So an extra hour puts you on the retirement.
But if it's, but-
That's weird.
And this is actually technically part of negotiations, so, but I'm just, I'm just going to put in, the other factor here is, yes, we brought them so close to being what would be considered full-time, that now that becomes an issue, however, I'm going to turn around and say, well, jeez, we took them from 30 to 34 and gave it four more, so I'm going to play devil out of kids on that, but yes. And I don't, I can reach out to the retirement board and see what the calculation is, but if you're 35 or more hours, they consider that a full year's of service. If you work under 35 hours, there's some type of prorating system that you don't get a full year of service on your retirement calculation. Now, I don't know if one hour means, okay, you're getting 98%, if it drops it back to 90, but I'll reach out and see if I can find out for you.
Isn't our treasurer and principal assessor in the same boat?
No.
No, they're elected.
So-
Well, not the principal assessor.
No, that's true, yeah. Principal assessor would be in the same boat.
Clerk and the treasurer are elected, so the hour rule does not apply to them.
Correct.
But they're all intensive purposes, considered full-time?
As long as, if you are elected and compensated a minimum of $5,000 annually, you get full credit.
Okay, so there's no, is there anybody else that is in the same situation as you in town?
No one's like an hour less.
Because everybody, everybody was much lower, it was only the police, fire, and the finance team that was actually changed to do a half-day on Friday. So everybody else must be less than 32, correct? 32 or less? I'm talking library, COA, health director, building inspector. They're all 32 or less.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just, just be clear on the notes we got, so 44 is without the fire EMS, so now we've added in the 2%, right?
2.5.
2.5, sorry, 2.5%. So we need to have a motion on that? Just to, let's vote on that, that we were in agreement for-
I'll make a motion to improve fire EMS wage for FY '24 to 2, 2.5%.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes?
John.
Thank you.
Reni and John. Okay, so that then gets us down to 31, okay. Okay, so, and you've plugged that into the overall figure that we have our-
So you want to look at two?
How far apart we are now? We're still in the, we're still in the good, in the good part?
Yeah.
Yes, we're still in the black.
Still in the black, good.
So we could look at two and?
Yeah. Wait a minute, is it, is it 31,000?
Yes, 31, 258, 60.
And you had said that you feel that we should go up on the vocational, maybe one more student, it's another what, 19,000?
19. That would be two students, not even.
Yeah, unless we've got a deep, looks like a decent surplus for this year, I would suggest adding one additional vocational student at 19,000.
Are you saying the surplus at the moment is 31,000?
No, no, I mean, in the current vocational tuition account, if for some reason we were actually, looked like we were going to run a decent surplus to the end of the year and have, you know.
So you're going to check that first before we make that move? Or you want to add the 19 now as precaution, or?
Add the 19 now as precaution, and then I'll check on it, and if we can back it out, we will.
So let's add one, one student worth? Just gives a little wiggle room just in case.
19,000 leaves us, it leaves us like 12,000 dollars.
That's all?
No, there's more, there's more in there.
Yeah, I thought it was 50. Because originally, it was 77, right? And then with the step raises-
71.
Huh?
71.
71.
71.
And the step raises plus the 2.5 on fire came in is how much?
Step was-
12 and 27.
Step was like 20.
37.
12, 2.
27 and 12, right?
Mm-hmm. So shouldn't it be 40-something thousand? Do we have a figure for the surplus at the moment? It's 37 and 71, it's going to be 40-something, right? We're 25,000 with the model increases.
What was the 52?
That's the difference between revenue estimate and budget one.
Once you, because you added 19,000 in.
Okay, I got you, okay.
I added the 19,000 for the vocationals.
Yeah, because that was at 71 before.
Oh, you already did?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Unless you don't want me to put it there. Do you want me to put it at the bottom instead of putting it actually in the budget? It's not going to change this 12,000, it's just-
No, I think you're fine.
Yeah, I think leave it there, I mean, unless, and then when we meet again, you'll have had a chance to see whether there's any surplus there and we can figure out whether we need to carry it through, but it seems like it would be wise to just have one extra student budgeted for, just in case.
Like I say, I'll go back and take a look and see where exactly what looks like we're going to fall.
Right, because that would have been 91671, right?
Well, with only 12,000, it seems a little-
So 12,000 is-
Sad experience to go through the, all the line items in the budget and-
Yeah, but I guess what, what I was thinking, we should go through the, the master total budget rather than, you know, if we're done, and just see where, where we had any questions on anything, because some of these requests from budget one and budget two, we ought to just double check what's on budget two request, make sure that we agree that we're really just dealing with, with one for the most part, or is there something in budget two that all of a sudden we realize should come in into budget one? And we do have a couple of things hanging out in ARPA, especially border health-related, that we've got to figure out. If we're not covering it here, we definitely need to think about it for ARPA, so there's a couple of those decision-making things I think we have, they put it in both places, did they not?
What applications are currently pending for ARPA?
Oof, well.
We have the financial software.
Financial software, we've got the, uh.
Bowling.
Bowling, health inspector, um, the health inspector wages, we've got the.
Health inspector wages?
Whatever, what is?
Health director?
Health agent.
Health agent, sorry.
Health agent fees.
Fees, whatever, whatever Charlie's title is, I'm sorry.
The three, the three extra hours for the health director again.
So the health director, three extra hours, the inspection fee for, for that position. We have two more, we have a very small request in, another second request in from Canal Bowling Lanes that just came in. A very small one, about five thousand dollars maybe.
Yeah, I think in totals, that's up to about twenty or twenty-one is thousand.
The total, including the sign, but we treated them separate. And then we've got the fifteen thousand that we put aside for the overages.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
What overages?
The fire department overages that we, we were taking out of ARPA.
But that's gonna be a wash, right?
Well, at some point it may hopefully come back in.
When they can transfer, when.
When we can transfer it back into ARPA at some point, hopefully.
Actually, you know what? Thank you. That is a potential article for this town meeting for, whether, I'll have to look at it for like twenty-five thousand dollars to be appropriated from ambulance receipts into those accounts to cover the ambulance thing, so thank you.
Yep.
So that, that puts money back in ARPA.
Well, at some point, we're hoping that, that money, that fifteen thousand would come back in.
Would come back into ARPA.
Yeah, when we're able to actually do the transfers.
Chris, is there any grant match?
Grant match, oh, duh, oh, hang on. Yeah, we've got one out there, we have one out there now for the, uh, Clean Water Fund, the culvert process here. Uh, we've already put it in, though.
Put it in the budget?
We've, no, we, we put it in ARPA. It's a hundred, it's a hundred and forty thousand, and that's one, though, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong. We had to put in the entire amount, we had to appropriate the entire amount of this, for the Clean Water Fund, the hundred and forty thousand, but the amount of the grant was like, I think it was a sixty-forty split.
Sounds right. So theoretically, we get sixty percent of that back.
Maybe sixty thousand back eventually.
Right.
But we have to show that we've got the full amount appropriated, but as we start spending it, and it's a reimbursable grant, then some of that will not have to be spent, I guess is what I'm saying. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Sort of phrasing that?
And then, I, I recognize that the ARPA funds are getting very slim.
They are.
But I was telling Chris today that, and I've been trying to get actual estimated costs out of Tianban for about three months. One of the things that I had potentially thought about of utilizing ARPA funds for was to do the stormwater fee study to set up, actually, a account and charge fees for stormwater maintenance, which would cover the MS four costs, the actual costs of doing the work to clean out the catch basins, sweep the streets, cap, capital for a street sweeper, or a catch basin vacuum type of thing. That came back more than I thought it would be, the estimate was fifty to sixty thousand, but I'll just let you make, be aware of that.
This is just to set up the program?
That's just to set up the program, correct.
For most other towns, I know that North Hampton did, but do most other towns, uh, charge a fee?
There's a good amount of them that do.
Yeah, and would that be paid by the homeowner, or the developer, or both?
I'll say the property owner.
Property owner, okay. So that is something in the future, maybe if we find other ARPA funds or other source of funding, we might be able to do that. But we don't have fifty thousand, I'll tell you that now, left in ARPA. I'm, I'm still double-checking on my math on this. The other one we just did was the, about fifty-four hundred dollars for the Concom agent.
Right, right.
So we've got, you know, pieces here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna work on this this weekend and pull it all together. One thing I will remind us, as, as we go into, um, what did we call it? Um, and we've done the school ones, they're set now, um, hold on a minute. The, was the master plan for Conant gonna have to come back to us for an increase? Or is that hanging in at the eight thousand that they predicted?
I'm waiting to hear back from people's thoughts about that, if they just wanna pursue it at the, how would you say it, reduced scope of work for the seventy-five hundred.
That's not something CPC would cover?
I don't know, to be honest with you.
Not sure. Is, is there anything under expenses in the budget currently that can be shifted? Now, I noticed that the IV pole is shifted off, but yet capital hasn't met yet, this is a requirement. So do you know if that's on the list for capital?
The what?
That, remember the IV pole, that's like six thousand dollars from the fire department, the ambulance?
No, it is not.
It's not on the list for capital? Well, I think it was taken off the budget, I didn't see it in here.
Is it in their wish list maybe to be?
Yeah, so that's one thing we need to take a look at.
Uh, to be covered by the override?
Yeah. So the one thing that we have in hand, that I guess I'm not quite sure, and I'll take your guidance on it. We had already funded twenty thousand in the border health contract inspection services, that's what I was trying to say before. We had approved twenty thousand, but we had encumbered ten thousand. And I didn't know if I should be splitting that ten thousand to FY twenty-four. But what we had said in our notes here was, the motion includes an additional ten thousand encumbered, but not able to be used until other items, hang on, sorry. Uh, until other items we've discussed have been dealt with, i.e. adjusting the fee schedule. Considered effort needs to be made to get a temp employee, not a contractor. So we had twenty approved and ten encumbered, and now we have a request for thirty, so maybe we really only have a request for twenty.
So can we find out what we've actually spent so far, and how?
Well, I was just gonna go another round, too. Bradley, would you please pull up the fiscal year twenty-three expense report? And let me, well, I wanna, I also, would also, would like the board to know what, if anything, is still budgeted in the health agent's wage account?
Yeah, it's five thousand dollars, I already checked.
Still there, because that is a potential.
Fifty-three, fifty-three, five thousand, fifty-three something like that.
Well, that can be.
That has to be moved over.
That can be moved over, which would reduce the demands on the ARPA funds.
Of the, of the health agent? It looks like there's ten thousand left, according to the report from April sixth.
Oh, hang on a second, expense report? What I'm looking at is April sixth, and it was... Oh, maybe I was looking at the percentage. Well, that's, Bradley, find it if it's gonna come up here. But just offhand on what we already approved, do we agree that the twenty thousand is for FY twenty-three, and the ten thousand encumbered should be, I should have it in my FY twenty-four column?
It's only eighteen percent spent, so there's ten thousand left.
There's, like I say, that can be transferred in May and June from the, that wage account into the expense account, and that reduces the usage of the ARPA funds.
Yeah, there's still ten thousand.
So we've got, where is it here?
Right there.
So the inspect, no, where's the?
Health agent.
Health agent.
So that should be ten thousand dollars available.
Yeah. They're not gonna spend that between now and the end of the year.
No, because they don't have a health agent.
Right, that's what I mean.
They can't.
So there's that, but then the, where?
They could transfer it.
Where do the inspection services, where is Charlie's stuff being charged?
On ARPA.
No expense.
It's not, it's only in ARPA.
It's only in ARPA.
Only in ARPA.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Can we find out what's actually been spent, because that's a separate PO, right, in ARPA?
And I don't know if it's separated between her three hours and his.
And Bradley, I think you, you sent me that, I think it was last report.
If I updated the expense side of ARPA in my file.
Yeah, and that was, um, project request twenty-two, twenty-two, I think?
He's purchaser twenty-three thirty-six.
Or, sorry, project request thirty-six, sorry.
So there's three thousand six hundred twenty dollars left in that project.
How much, three?
Three thousand six hundred twenty.
All right, and that's.
From the twenty.
From the twenty.
About a month.
So then.
And then additional ten.
Right, but the ten is sitting right here.
Yeah, and I, I recall, the initial ask was for the thirty, and we agreed to the twenty because based on the documents given to us, that's what it looked like it was gonna be for the end of the year. And we tasked them with going back and saying, if this is really what it costs, then your fee schedule should be adjusted to this. Now, Kate did, Kate did comment on it and say they looked at it and they felt it should stay.
Right.
And we gave additional feedback, and, you know, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah.
But, so my whole, since we're on this subject, my issue is, for next year's budget, I, I feel it's, for the budget, it's one number or the other. Either we leave the thirty thousand in the budget and we zero out the health agent, or we leave the health agent in there, we take the thirty thousand out. And, and, and whatever, whatever that subcontractor is, is over in ARPA.
Right, or you do some type of combination and say.
I don't think forty-three thousand should stay on the budget, cumulative.
Yeah, and, and whether you left two or three in the health agent, and, you know, and pulled that from the vendor expense side, just so, oh, if they got somebody on, or hired, that, okay, well, they can start, but now we gotta do a special town meeting to transfer what was in the expense side back over to the fee side, but. But, yeah, I was just think, I was gonna ask him to call it up, because I thought they had both numbers in there, too.
But the health agent, that's the twelve thousand, that will be used, that, that's currently.
Only if we hire somebody.
No, but we can do a line item.
Right, for next year's budget, that position is vacant at the moment, health agent. Health director is full, filled, health agent, they're trying to find.
Right now, okay, so, for example, so the animal inspector is only, that used to be the combination, animal inspector and health agent, was the same person.
Right, and now animal inspector is one fifty-seven. Now, you see one fifty, line one fifty-seven?
Right, yeah.
What do you mean, it's, bottomed out, it's still twelve, thirty, three ninety-one?
Right, but I'm saying the health, the health agent and the animal inspector were one of the same person before.
Right, right.
Now the health agent is vacant, right?
Well, no, it's right there, twelve. Oh, yeah, the position's vacant, but the, the.
The night is still on the line.
Yes, position's vacant.
Well, theoretically, okay, you've got, now we're gonna lose my, where the heck is it? Okay, here's your expense line. Here's your health agent line.
Right.
You could theoretically say this is zero, or you could say it's three thousand dollars, and then move whatever that difference is down to here to cover the vendor, okay? You're still gonna have to do ARPA to get to the thirty-three, but you've now reduced your, your ARPA demand by whatever that funding.
I mean, I'd like to save a little bit more ARPA money, because I think.
I think that's a good idea.
I think we're getting, you know, close on ARPA here with other things kind of, they sound like they're small, but they're all kind of filtering in, and I, I think to the extent that we can figure out a way to.
But then, this year's salary is just gonna go in, unused salary is just gonna go into free cash? Or are we gonna roll that and, and, and return that portion to ARPA? I think it should be moved over, you know, soon, over to the, um, expense line, so that can, they can draw out of that first before they use ARPA. No? They used it, they only had twenty thousand so far.
Right.
No, but right now they have ten thousand dollars in, in, that's unaccounted for under the health agent.
They could be made available.
They could be made available instead of using ARPA funds, correct?
I think they should use that first, that's their, that's their budget.
Hang on, because remember when we, when we did this, we, we, we had a big bill to be paid before we decided on the ARPA here, and we swapped some money around for them? So we included an inspection bill of nineteen hundred and forty dollars already paid from BOH General Fund to be classified as part of the twenty thousand. So that's one of the things we did, and that, yeah. So we were, whatever that's, doing that, so, because then we, there, there was originally gonna be a motion, an article on the special town meeting warrant, and that, what we did.
The vote was to give them all the money out of ARPA.
Right, that canceled it out, so, so we have twenty approved and ten thousand encumbered, and I guess I'm still asking, where would you like me to put the ten thousand that I've got counted in my total here for ARPA? Is it off to the side, is it in twenty-four for this same?
Well, I would say based on what they have left in their account now of the initial twenty thousand.
Yeah.
And that they can transfer starting May first, which is two weeks away.
Right.
And there's thirty-six hundred in there, that, that ten thousand earmarked that we have, we put that into twenty-four, and we give them instructions that if they exceed the twenty thousand, they need to do a line item transfer. Right?
For FY twenty-three, they exceed the twenty thousand?
Right. For that service.
So the ten thousand for ARPA.
Goes in twenty-four.
Goes into twenty-four.
And even, so even just doing that, we can reduce the thirty thousand that's in the budget now for twenty-four down to twenty, and they still got the thirty.
Right.
Even if we don't do anything else.
Well, that, that's giving them money out of category two, right?
I think thirty thousand's in both their budget, both requests, one and two.
Yeah, they did, I think they did both.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, they don't.
Thirty and thirty's right.
Right, they, they, that's how they submitted it, we changed it, yeah.
Have a line item for their thirty thousand, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, one assumes ARPA.
And two. So they're, so we're basically supporting their request to do a contract service for the health agent for the entire year?
Well, so this is where I come back in. If that's what we are doing, and I'm not saying I'm in support of that, then if we're gonna do that, then we zero the health agent. Because they're saying we need thirty thousand for contract service for the entire year, not six months, to give us six months to hire somebody, we need it for the whole year, well then, you can't have both.
Yeah, I think that it should be an expectation of six months, I mean, I don't really feel, and I also don't, I don't support the additional hours, additional three hours for the health director. I don't, you know, like, there's lots of requests for additional hours, nothing has gone through PQB. I don't think it's been, gone through PQB, it's just come to ARPA and we've said yes. I don't think that's entirely fair. We have requests for a council and aging director to go up to ours, we have a request for the town accountant, I mean, the additional hours in the assessor's office, which hopefully would capture more revenue for the town. So, I mean, I, 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 right now, I would, I would suggest that we allow contracted expenses for six months on the health agent and give the health director exactly what. On the health agent consultant. Right, yeah, well, it's under expense.
Well, and we can come back on the ARPA thing when we meet on all the various ARPA ones, so I just wanted to be clear on my chart as I was doing my totals, because I was getting this up.
All your notes are very helpful, actually.
So while we're still on this tab right here, if, if, at the end of the day, we're trying to only cherry pick things off budget two to put on budget one, I do support the animal inspector going to thirty-five hundred in budget one. To making that change in that stipend. I, I think for three hundred sixteen, sixteen dollars, we, we need to figure out how to make that happen. Yes, it's a stipend, but it's an employee, it's out there, they're doing stuff for us, they're not getting a raise like everybody else.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
So I, I would, I would change that number right there, that three-one-eight-three to the thirty-five hundred in budget one.
In year one, do you have that in budget one?
Yeah.
I would, I would agree with that, I don't have a problem with that.
I'd say go ahead and keep punching, Bradley.
Right.
You're good.
Think about it.
Are you sure? Are you really sure?
Green, so you know that it's something we changed?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Is that your final answer?
So then we know that we've made a change this evening, okay? All right, then, so then are we?
So we're gonna leave the twelve in, in year, wait, year one and take it out of two, or we taking it out of both?
Well, I would say if we're going to give them fifty percent, six months of contracted services, we should only give them six months of wages for the health agent.
Okay, yeah. But are we taking it out of, are we adding that much money to our operating budget, or are we going to take it out of ARPA?
And I guess I'm a little confused, because I, I wasn't aware of any more real big projects, because the, unless something happened on financial software, that's already in there, we've already.
We've put that aside, yeah. We've put that amount of money aside, and I believe I had put thirty thousand aside, too, for this inspection service.
So I know you, you wanna clean up your numbers, but right now, what's it looking like, is still available to be assigned?
Actually, no, I'm gonna take that back.
I would support a six-month plan of doing fifty-fifty. I, I, I think that's a good idea. I do.
It also gets us out to January first.
Yeah, I think I had noted part of the uncommitted funds, which would've included the Canal Bowling Lane, this, this fifteen thousand for the overages, the, I don't have the Concom agent in here yet, but then the thirty thousand for the inspection services as requested, I think I had put that aside, so with those, I was down to about seventy thousand or something left altogether.
So can we shift over the health agent half of it to expenses for the next year? And take the balance of it out of ARPA?
Yeah, so Chris, the seventy thousand is, you've accounted for all the current requests that you have before you.
Except these last couple that just came in, like the new, the new Canal Bowling Lane, and the Concom guy, and, so it's probably, let's knock it down to probably about closer to sixty.
But we haven't approved all those yet, right?
No, we haven't, no, we haven't. So I've, I've just kinda set them aside in my math here, so, yeah, no, they are not approved yet.
Are you in support of that? Taking half of the health agent line that's there, moving it into expense and making up the difference of the thirty with ARPA? Or fifteen? up the difference of the 30 with ARPA, or 15 with ARPA?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, get some of the coverage that they need, one way or the other.
Yep.
So, make it, maybe make a note there, Bradley, for yourself, that whatever the balance is, is gonna be covered probably through ARPA, is that what we're saying? And so, by putting that into the health expenses, that allows a contract to be done, correct?
Yeah, half of it, though, so, it'll be like 6 something.
But, if, if this does not, if this position does not, was not filled, the regular health agent position, and we have to continue in the second six months of the year with the consultant, where does that come from?
Free cash.
Well, so, theoretically, theoretically, 'cause you've got 10 of ARPA that just got moved over to 24, you've got 16, 195, 94 to start the year.
Right.
Be between this and 10,000 in ARPA.
So, I would, I would take, I would change budget 1, health agent, line 25, to that 50% number.
6195, 94.
And then, yep, and then change line 27 to 9,000, uh, 195, 94. All right, so, then, that leaves a shortfall of 8,800, and we've already committed $10,000 in ARPA.
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't need any additional funds from ARPA at this point. Right?
Wow, yo, can I, can I try enough for that one?
What one?
You just made the health, half the health agent, 69,000.
So, that takes the 10 that we've already encumbered for FY '24 in ARPA.
And covers it, we don't have to put any more ARPA funds into 24.
At this point in time. I mean, this, I mean, no, but, I mean, the 20,000 that we had budgeted, I don't remember when that started, did that get us a full, that probably didn't get us a full year, right?
But, they're, they're asking for 30, and we're, we're giving them more than 15,000, we're actually giving them 16, almost 16,200.
Right.
For the first six months.
But, they're on, yeah. Yeah, yeah, when we approved the, um, the last one, it was at the end of August, so, it would've been, you know, the, we've got it, say, September, October, November, so, Octoberish might've been our first billing or something like that, so, in, in six months' time, they've used, in six months' time, more or less, they've gotten down to 16,000 or something expensed out of the 20,000, thereabouts.
Ed, the mosquito control, why does it stick in my head something about five years? This isn't ongoing, every, every year, 5,000 to be part of the surveillance thing?
Yes, because now, they've changed the rules and regulations that if we leave that program, we've gotta come up with our own program.
Yeah.
And is, is that worth trying to say 5,000? Probably not.
No, no, but, don't forget, all, a lot of other towns are opting out, remember?
But, they have this...
Well, they can, they can opt out, but they still have to come up with their own...
You gotta come up with a plan, yeah.
And the threat is, I mean, how expensive, if there is an outbreak, how expensive is it containing, and if you don't pay that 5,000, as they just say, they're not gonna help a lick, and it could be very expensive.
It's just surveillance, but, you know, mosquitoes do cross town lines.
It's sort of like buying insurance. You got proof of that?
Hey.
I know. And I'm for it.
Okay, so, we made a little bit of headway there.
Okay.
What, do you want to just go down through the...
Yeah, let's go over the whole thing.
The whole budget, and just see where we are, we kind of jumped down into that area, but, do we want to go back up?
Want to start at the top?
Start at the top, and just see what we, what we know about.
You know, I wonder if, too, like, I just had, there were a lot of things I highlighted on the expense report, I mean, I know it's, we still have three months, but there was a, quite a bit that was underspent. Can I just ask a few questions about that?
Go ahead, yeah.
I'm worried, you know, like, is the person that's covering the veteran agent in Jerry's absence, is that person tending to the, 'cause there's, nothing's been spent on that line, it's not a lot, anyway, but, I'm just asking.
They just started...
Well, that's a monthly, or, I forget, is it monthly or biweekly stipend?
Yeah. How do we...
Bradley? Veterans agent?
No, the veterans agent.
They're paid with payroll.
Okay, so, it's biweekly.
Okay, there's nothing spent on the line at all.
There has to be.
It's 700, and there's nothing spent.
That's veteran's agent expenses.
That's expenses.
Expenses, not, not salaries.
It's light above it.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only, it's 80, 80.77% expended.
Okay, employment advertising, 0 expended, reserve fund, 0% expended, although it looks like...
No, that's not true, because you transferred out of it, so, that's why it's showing 0.
Okay.
It was, that was 5,000 to start.
Now, tax title expenses in a minus 31.5%. Open space hasn't spent theirs, technology equipment, 2.63%.
Yeah, that's, where's that, technology, equipment?
Technology.
Some of that, the, um, hang on, I'll let Bradley catch up here.
2.63%.
It left. Not expended, left. 2.63% left.
Left, oh, left?
Yeah.
It says percent expended.
Says balance...
Nope, 2.3.
It says percent expended.
Only spent 218?
Yeah, that's what it says. I mean, a lot of this doesn't make sense, I could go on, there's some more here that...
That one doesn't make sense.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them that...
I'll have to go look and see if some of that went into services instead of equipment.
I can run a report for that, if you want to see.
And even the MS4 is only less than 25% expended.
That, it's, takes forever for, to him by the catch-up, yeah.
Well, speaking of that, last time, we had to have, you know, some, um, are, are, do all the department heads and all the committees know that they need to get anything in before the end of the fiscal year? Last time, it was a big problem with ZBA, somebody ended up having bills that we had to add to a special town meeting to rectify?
That notice goes out usually the beginning of June.
Okay.
By me.
Okay, all right, $12,000, fire expense structural turnout gear, 0% expended, is that gonna happen at the end of the year?
They usually do it, because he's on a regular cycle to replace that, I would assume that would get spent.
What is that?
Between now and June, firing the turnout gear.
$12,000, 0% expended on the turnout gear.
Yeah, that comes, that comes in one hunk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, and there's a receipt in March for $15,000.
Oh, there is, okay.
We'll get there.
Okay, I don't, I don't know how we have 0 expended on employment advertising, I thought we had, I thought we advertised a lot, but I guess not.
No, it's all been via free methodology this year.
Did we pay for anything under, um, what do you call it?
No, we, we actually went to the free version of, uh, indeed.
Yes, I'll toss a few promote your position online.
Yeah, some of the online stuff we used, right? Okay, well, let's go back up to the budget briefly there, and see where we are, okay? And kind of go down through, um...
So, right, I mean, it's, I would like to increase line 6.
Line, sorry?
6.
6, yeah.
Select board expenses?
Right, so, this is one, I was just gonna double-check that, so, this is one where I believe I had put in a request for initial, it was a changeover last year, there was $5,000, I think, that I had put in, uh...
Meeting room chairs.
My narrative, the, the request, I think, was 5,000 more to, um, have available for recruiting process for, uh, town administrator position.
I agree with that.
It may be a little short.
Right, so, we, I mean, it looks like this year, we had 1,800, and then, so, it, it looks like the increase is 4,600.
Well, 1,800 was for, you know, membership and dues, and those kinds of things, it wasn't just...
So, those are gonna continue.
Those will continue, so, the, the 5,000 was the difference that I had put in there as a request, um, but it might be better to put in 6,500 or something like that, rather, 5,000 may be a little shy.
That does seem like a lot.
But, I think, if you go through a search firm, rather than us trying to do an internal committee...
Oh, is that what, specifically for, okay.
I would, I would not, I'm frankly, you know, we've got so many different little committees here trying to start doing searches on things, I would favor, to the extent we, you know, whenever we end up entertaining this, that this would be an outside search firm, and let them do the heavy lifting rather than us.
I would support 6,500 to 7,000, somewhere right in there.
Yeah, so, probably it's another 1,500 of what I had asked for there, honestly.
Can I ask?
The minutes stay the same, but...
Before we go down, um, all of these lines, what has been requested for addition, you know, we obviously had the stipend for the animal inspector, I think there was a request for increase of health director, there was an increase for council and aging director, increase in the assessor's office, I think fire and police, or we're looking for an administrative aid or something?
Yeah, I think, well, as we go through these, that's what we'll talk about, I think that's the way to go through them, is like...
Bradley, can you change line 17, budget 1, to 8,300? Thanks.
Yeah.
So, that keeps the 1,800 that we need for the dues and all that stuff, and then add 6,500.
Yeah, right, but that gives us a little bit of wiggle room, to the extent that we decide to go out for a search, outside search, okay? Um, okay, so, then, minutes, I think we were okay with, so, I was fine on that. So, internet service, Ed, turn it off, yours, that's the, the cost on the internet service, so, is that, you're okay with that budget as is, or?
Yes, because that includes the increase, uh, would cover 12 months of the increase, where we went up one platform, uh, so, we had enough bandwidth to the voice, voice-over IP.
It went down 120 dollars from last year's budget.
Okay, hey, a little savings.
Is that right?
It's a decrease.
Oh, wait, is increase a decrease, I'm, sorry, I'm wrong.
And the, um...
Yep, the decrease.
Right, and was that a, um, that was a change in, in our spectrum tier, right? But, is there, um...
Correct.
Is there any kind of a maintenance fee or anything on the voice-over IP that we have to worry about, or license fee, or?
Well, that's one of the things I'm gonna take a quick look at when we get to telephone, 'cause that's where, that and Verizon is.
Okay. Oh, okay, so, then, back, what are we looking at? I don't know, it's a total, yeah.
Postage, it just got up to 66 cents.
Yeah, postage just keeps on going up, they were just talking about that, did, did they actually move to raise it? I know they're talking about going up from 63, for sure. Oy, okay.
Yes, and it's, I forget what date that's going on, but it's a 5% increase.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have no recommendation, but can we highlight row 12, request 1, to come back, I mean, I don't know if there needs to be an adjustment later on, but if we just highlight it as a placeholder and...
Yeah. All right, what about the, um, the photocopier lease, that goes into our current photocopier, our new guy? That's...
I believe it's a 500 savings.
Yeah.
From last year.
There was a little bit of savings, yeah, from last year, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
What is the increased request for town accountant expenses?
Was for classes, was it what?
Hopefully, hopefully, that will cover his classes and boot camp, does that cover boot camp, too?
It covers boot camp, it doesn't cover the big, long, expansive classes, that would be in my budget, too.
I would actually ask you, the select board, I think it's very important, if you can, to...
I agree.
...fund that.
Yeah.
Make it to 3,400.
3,400?
Yeah.
Yep.
We should move that into 1.
I would agree with that, and I think the finance committee, when Donna was here that night, she strongly recommended that as well. Okay. What else we got there?
So, currently, we have for accounting software support, that's my prior year soft write maintenance fee. Currently, the treasurer doesn't have anything in her software support line.
And that was one of the things the finance committee did ask about last night, and, yeah, I hadn't, I had thought about, any new software support, uh, is gonna be included in the package that we get, however, if we do change, and go to a different vendor, and we, and we wanna maintain some overlapping software support, it may be a good idea to, uh, fund this particular line item and the one in the treasurer collector, uh, software support.
Isn't, and they bill us all upfront on July 1st, right?
They do, correct, so, it's a year.
Is there a separate line for that in the treasurer's budget, or?
Yes, there is.
Zero right now.
Zero right now.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's what I mentioned.
So, what would we end up putting in?
It was 12 before, 12 something, 12, 7, 4, 406.
Yeah, and, and probably, in reality, if, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna get, actually have to pay it, it's, both of them will probably be equivalent to, what, a 5% increase to what this year is.
So, this would allow an overlap for a couple months or something, or?
A full year. Right, I mean, if, if we went to Springbook, which is the next upgrade to soft write, I have an idea that these charges wouldn't exist, if we go with one of the other vendors, then we probably would have to pay this.
Right, okay, all right, so, we want to add in how much, then, on the budget for her, the 12, 4,000, sorry, the...
Well, if 12, 7, 4, 4s are expiring, and Ed's saying it's a 5% increase...
Right.
...as a placeholder.
Then, we'd have to increase mine by 5% as well.
Correct.
Yeah, so, let's do the increase on the accounting by 5%, and then, take a prorated amount of the 12,000.
There is no proration.
They, they, you gotta pay the whole year.
Oh, even if we don't use it for the entire year?
Yep. But, you'll have access to it.
Yeah, if we stay with that vendor.
If we stay with the vendor, they probably won't invoice us.
Oh, okay.
Right. 'Cause, I mean, in reality, how like, how like, how close are we to making an award by June 1st?
Oh, we need to...
Well, we, we want to actually, to implement by June 1st, we would have to actually start the process probably by the beginning of next month, so, I'm...
So, not likely.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna try to force it that way, Jen sent me her recommendations today, and next week, I'm gonna carve out time, and I'm gonna make Bradley carve out some time to call, basically, the contacts we have for those particular vendors, and get their impressions, and each one of us will make a, a recommendation, so we can move forward.
Yeah, 'cause I think the sooner the better, because, you know, we need a transition time, but, you know, the more we can get the current, next year's budget into a new software system, the better we'll be, I mean, I don't want to wait until January to start...
Well, I mean, I do, I do like the idea of starting the new software system clean on the first of the fiscal year, and keeping the old system going to when it closes, but you close, so, everything is crystal clear, and brand-new beginning, brand-new start, versus exporting data...
I agree.
...that we're still working, yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I agree, no, I agree. That's why a decision has to be made on that, so.
I think our options will be limited if we are focusing on July first start date. There's only one of the three vendors that said that they could get it in that time.
And I think we, there's one other vendor we could probably force to meet that.
Okay, well, you guys need to just carve out your time, like you said, and see if you can get a decision, because we've also been holding off that ARPA money for quite a while, so we'd like to chomp down on that. Okay, so how much are we putting in here then? What are we doing for the budget? We're putting in how much for?
If the four-two-two-one is expiring, just take that, multiply it by one point oh five. Do the same thing on the treasurers. Is there a piece in the assessors office too, or no? It's just split between accounting and treasury?
Currently, no, but in the proposals, yes.
I know the town clerk assistant is on those steps, but the clerk is counted in those calculations, right? For the steps? Yeah, okay.
Well, as you go through the clerks, I would just say it's probably more elections and registration expenses, but vote by, voting by mail is expensive. So it's, it's one area that I would think, if we can, to take a look at of diving into the wish list, the budget too. I mean, it's so expensive. I don't know if any of you saw the article, but the town of Agawam actually opted out of it because their, their estimation was it was going to, just that was twenty-eight thousand dollars.
They opted out of what?
Vote by mail.
Wow.
Do you want to look at the?
You've got, you're printing those ballots, you're basically sending them out and paying for postage. You're paying for the envelopes and time and everything else.
Did you say that we wanted to look at the wish list there?
I would recommend it.
Okay. Get that with that narrative. And we took out the, the issue on the dog licenses, right? We, that ended up being revolving fund that's not built in here anymore, right? Okay.
Can I just mention something? I was just looking at, what I have is the latest wage file that has hours per week and all that. Because the council and aging has requested an increase in the wages. They were trying to recruit a, recruit a new COA director. They're requesting going from twenty-six to thirty-two hours per week. All the other department heads, building thirty-two, board of health thirty-two, clerk thirty-one, library thirty-five, treasurer thirty-five, accountant thirty-four. So I'm just wondering, why is the clerk thirty-one? And do people support department heads being at least thirty-two hours a week? I mean, I would. It's going to be very difficult to recruit a new director at twenty-six hours a week.
Yeah, we'll get to that one in a moment, but yeah, why?
We're all great clerk, so I'm just wondering, why is it thirty-one hours a week?
Why thirty-one instead of thirty-two?
It's basically balanced off, I think, on the fact that the week is actually thirty hours.
Yeah.
And then that...
Tuesday night or something?
That, yeah, a couple, twice a month, two hours. For the Tuesday night opening, so, you know, basically that would be one hour over four weeks. Or one, and one extra hour a week.
I mean, the request is asking for an increase in salary. Does, does it, I know it wouldn't be the total satisfaction, but is there a, a piece of the puzzle that could be to, to add that extra hour and that would at least get a little bit more revenue for the person?
But how do you get there? And number one, it's can't be enforced, or number two?
It's an elected poll.
Elected decision.
Right.
Whereas, whereas, yeah, whereas I, my understanding is, my understanding, could be wrong, is with the COA director that I think they're looking at the thirty hours a week that the town hall is open, and then thinking that, okay, well, there's two ex, on an average, two extra hours a week for whether it's the board meeting or, you know, evening, getting into evening programs or...
Something on Friday.
Well, I, I would think more about evening programs than something on Friday, because I'm just going to bring up energy costs right now. And to, and to keep a room or a building open for a couple of extra hours, whether it's heating or cooling, is much easier than bringing that up from scratch for a day when it's down to nothing.
So the, on the, just on this tab here, the, I guess the wish list, it's looking like, I mean, something more than five percent, almost like eleven, eleven percent increase.
Right.
But at the very least, going to go up on the step and then the salary will come by, come back. I'm guessing the assistant wages is, well, that'll get straightened out to, or whatever. It's going to get updated to whatever the number is with the step up. So the town clerk expenses, wages, salary, I guess it's unrelated. Those expenses are unrelated to, to mail-in elections, because you would have, that would be down below where she's asking for an extra two fifty, right?
For election registration expenses? Yeah, it's eleven seven fifty.
Right, if, if, yeah.
So the eleven ninety-five is the increase over last year, right? In, in the town clerk expenses, and that is due to maintenance of the machines and...
The fact that we have two of them now.
Yeah.
Last year was the first.
And then I believe there's a maintenance cost to the E three sixty.
Oh, right, is that?
But isn't contractual included in one?
No, that eleven, that eleven ninety-five may be the E three sixty, no?
That's what I believe.
I think it is, that figure sounds too familiar. I think that is the, the, yeah, that's going to be the annual support fee for the new codification of the bylaw system.
Maybe number thirty should be eleven seven fifty then.
So line, line twenty-seven, twenty-nine, and twenty-three, I'm, I'm okay with pulling over wish list two numbers.
So which one's twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, which is an extra five hundred, and then the extra ten, the extra two. I mean, it's seven, it's seven hundred and sixty dollars collectively. In the expenses, and I think the top two lines will get adjusted based on, they're part of that twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So the various expense ones to move over, okay, to the budget two list.
And twenty-nine should be adjusted too. I mean, it will, why is that moving over? Isn't that already, would that already be included in the wages?
Yeah, because that one's in wages.
So why is that being asked for ten-dollar workers?
That was, wasn't that a, I forget, wasn't that something?
Yeah, just leave that fifty-two ninety. That'll get adjusted with the change.
Wasn't that an error or something?
No.
No.
Why won't?
None of those scales cover election workers.
Then it would be a two and a half then, right? Would it be a two and a half then?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think the ten-dollar, I'm trying to remember what Lucy said the other night, but it...
She said it looked nice.
Yeah, because my memory is that the election workers are at the minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour now, so. We're not driven to anything, but yes, you're absolutely right, Rainie, that while it's not in that scale, probably two or two and a half percent is appropriate.
Is there anybody else, like about library subs that are also at minimum wage? Are they included in any scale?
They're on that scale.
They're on that scale.
So only election workers and fire?
Right, because fire has its own scale, and at the time that that scale was created, election workers were paid a different way.
We had election, yeah, we had...
I would just give her the ten dollars.
Well, but I mean, if we did a...
Her notes down below are talking about two percents. So I'm, you know, again, two percent at fifteen dollars an hour, right? That's fifteen cents, that's thirty cents.
There, make it fifty-three, fifty-three then. I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Would you get in?
If you did the two and a half percent like you did with the fire EMS, it would come to fifty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
Fifty-four, twenty-four.
Fifty-four, twenty-two.
What percentage increase?
Two and a half percent.
That's, that's like over a hundred dollars more. She only put in ten. Maybe it was a typo.
Maybe.
Okay. All right, note that green too? Yeah, perfect, okay. All righty. Right in there. So Concom, they put in five. They were actually, they were asking for an extra thousand. Remember art came to us on that one? That was on expenses for more signage, I think.
Yep.
Trail work and whatever. I'd, I'd be fine with adding a thousand in there.
Concom and the, and Park, I mean, there's just a lot of good things happening.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot happening out there, so. All right, that had stayed the same. Pioneer Valley, that's going to be our membership, right, to PVPC?
Correct.
Peg programming is a wash, right?
Yeah. When does the peg programming come back?
Yeah, where's the revenue line for that? Is it in there?
In the, in the revenues.
Could I see it? Would you please bring up the revenue spreadsheet?
What do we do to re-deal with that contract? Because weren't they?
It was about five years.
Is it a three, I was thinking it was a three-year contract, okay.
No, it's like five.
Yeah, I think we did a five.
Don't forget, there's no money left for equipment.
You're going down, Bradley, please.
I don't see it. We just found sixty-eight thousand dollars. Empty's payment, meal, canvas, canvas, rubber, court fees, miscellaneous. Miscellaneous reoccurring, zero, so I mean, it's not there. I have any capital?
I think we got in trouble one year when we put it on miscellaneous or something, and then we never put money to that line on the revenue report.
It's there somewhere.
Okay, we keep looking.
Yeah, really. Go up and down.
Cue the Jeopardy music.
You did that, or is it, it's under department receipts?
Other departmental receipts, maybe that's it, yeah. Other departmental, that one?
Other departmental, we got to really label what that is, if that's what it is.
Is it sixty-eight?
Sixty-eight, I don't know if that's it. It could be somebody else.
I think so.
Whoa, did we just find sixty-eight thousand dollars?
I don't know.
I think we did, Madam Chair.
It's here somewhere.
It's not convinced that we did.
So the question is, is it in the wrong amount?
But it's sixty...
Because I remember changing it.
So you've got us, I don't know why we'd stick it under other departmental and not label it rather than, you know, so it's identifiable, even though that happens to be...
Go back to the revenue stuff, please. Roll up a little bit.
Would we have had it in a budget a couple of years ago somewhere?
I believe I estimated that revenue on a other departmental revenue line on the revenue report, and nothing ever went there, and it looked bad. But we received the peg programming in another revenue.
You know what, you're right, because I'm looking at the sixty-eight five.
Yeah.
And that could be it. Let us do some research.
And we're at thirty-four right now.
Yeah, okay. And this is twenty-two, we estimated fifty-one thousand eight hundred, and nothing ever went there. And we didn't know what happened.
But we received money.
Wait, this is twenty-three, never mind. But same thing, like, we have a line called other departmental, and we just put...
Yeah, but for fiscal year twenty-four, do we have anything in that other departmental?
What do you mean? This is the file we're using, and we're saying sixty-six.
And what do we have in the expense side for twenty-four, for peg programming?
Expense side? Fifty-one thousand so far.
No, no, the budget piece.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven?
Yeah, the budget request.
Forbes.
Spreadsheet, peg programming.
Revenues?
Expense.
Sixty-eight, right there, line fifty-six.
Then that sixty-eight, six, eight should be sixty-eight in the revenue side. Match it.
Okay.
So...
Does that?
It's already added in, or it's not added in?
Well, most of it was added in. But not the correct amount.
Two thousand, maybe? So that was it, just a thousand?
So we want this to be sixty-eight thousand?
Sixty-eight, it should match, exactly.
Yeah, sixty-eight. And can we, can we label that peg? Is that, is that the only thing coming in there?
Yeah, but I think what Bradley was saying earlier is there already is a revenue peg access line item. And so he's, he's coding it there correctly
Okay.
on the budget side, but on this work paper.
I see.
Yeah.
Seven-six-two-hundred. Now, we have a new line like that.
All right, are we in there? Yeah. All right.
What's the ask for in building, town hall building expenses?
The fact that the building is now starting to get older and needing repair work. We started to have zone valves, which are about, about six hundred dollars a piece replaced. Right now, I've got a hold on some work to our hot water system, which is about three thousand dollars. So the building's just starting to see things needing to be repaired from being converted into two thousand and eleven. We actually had a, the lighting sensor. What do the lighting sensors go? This past year, it took a fellow a while to actually find it. It was about a thousand dollars to replace it. Unfortunately, they put a bunch of them in an office that wasn't where the lights were controlled. But he actually took it out, and when he took it out, he goes, wow. Now, this is the first one I've replaced since I've been here. He said, wow, this has lasted a long time. Usually they don't last this, this long, so.
So how about if we split the difference? Instead of the full six thousand, ask three thousand or two thousand, I mean, put something in there.
Well, that'll replace the, fix the hot water in July, so.
I mean, something's better than nothing, right?
Exactly.
Yay, nay?
So we already went past the assessors stuff, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I had questions.
So we're just going to hold off from that in terms of any requests for covering in the office? Right now Jeanne's there, what, fourteen, sixteen hours a week? We have a temporary PA. I mean, it's just not a great-
So I was wondering if on there, if we take that sixty thousand and we take a quarter of it?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, if they were-
Not going to have anybody for school.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, right? Just reduce the principal assessor. It's still a sixty thousand dollar job, but the likelihood of getting somebody hired and placed by September first would free up enough money to move it down to the assistants' job.
Yeah.
You know, so it stays neutral in there, but it lets her just do the extra hours.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
The question is, is it a permanent increase in hours they want even after a full-timer is hired? Or is this really an ask during this?
I think what they're hoping to do is to be able to cover the office with admin. So Jeanne's going to retire at some point and they're hoping to be able to have a presence in the office. Because right now the office is closed a lot. And because Dave is only there, what? Not even twenty hours a week.
Right.
Right.
Exactly. And it's only two days a week. And their agreement with him is he doesn't basically do regular, shall we say, over-the-counter assessor work.
Right, right. So they just have Jeanne like a small number of hours. So the hope was to be able to get enough hours to cover when the town halls open with somebody who's going to greet the public, handle all the excises, abatements, all of that.
Right. Which drives the rest of us nuts because people come in and the hours are the days that there's nobody there and want to get things done or, you know, or the individual that's there is on vacation or sick or whatever. So, yeah, the theory was, would be that someone's in the office for the thirty hours a week.
I mean, they do have a couple of possible things happening in terms of where they're going to, the direction they're going to go in. There, there's a person on the ballot to be the third person on the Board of Assessors. So I think nothing can happen until they have a full board. And then they have a couple of, the person that they hired to do consulting was kind of hoping he might be able to do a shared position. But he's standing, doesn't want to share even though the position is open at the moment because they just jacked up their, their salaries for everybody. So they wanted to give a certain amount of time to see if they can get somebody on their own. So they're exploring a bunch of things. It's just, so definitely a thin department.
So could we take fifteen thousand from the assessor wages and put it down into the admin wages? At least get it.
I think that would probably be an idea for now.
Get it there and then we can still work out, you know, what that means in terms of.
Yeah.
Right, because isn't one of the things they're looking at also is the, is actually looking at the other towns that use a firm to handle the principal position?
Yeah, I think first choice would be to have their own
Yes.
because I think that the town would like that local
Yep.
thing. And then a next thing would be shared and then the third would be contracts.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Reduce principal assessor wages by fifteen thousand.
So just keep in mind that I think that there's already-
Take a quarters off, yeah, a quarter off.
So what was there before was Jeanne. I think they're wanting the additional hours that would offset hers so that there would be somebody in that office all along. So is that what that fourteen, eight, seven, nine represents? Is the-
Of the ask.
Yes.
That would be the ask, right? The additional ask for her.
Right.
Budget from last year.
Right. But you just, you just combine Jeanne's with that.
She didn't yet.
Didn't do anything yet.
She didn't do it.
Yes. Right, if you can take that twenty-nine.
Yeah, move it over.
Yeah, twenty-nine should be over there, not fourteen.
Right, no, right. He hasn't made a change, yeah.
Yeah, the wish list too. There you go.
Yeah.
And then reduce the sixty by fifteen.
Reduce that one, right.
Well, should we reduce it by the fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-nine?
I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had said fifteen, so that's close enough anyway.
Or just make it, yeah. Or just make it.
You know, most accountants don't like this whole rounding thing. Ah, just fif, let's round it up to fifteen thousand.
Round it in.
Okay. All right. Reduce it by the fourteen, eight, seventy-nine, sixty-four.
He has stickers all over everything.
Well, I have a different question.
Uh oh. We thought we were on top.
So we had one person in that position. They were going to move a step, which is going to change that number.
Right.
What would you like me to do for that second person?
It's fine.
Second person would be?
Bring it up. Maybe we'll get an extra half hour.
The second person will go up, but not necessarily a new person. If there's going to be offsetting hours, that Jeanne's position would go up because I'm sure she's part of that formula. Right?
Who's the second person? I'm confused.
Well, they're trying to cover the office by-
But that increase was just four.
Yeah, that was the increase.
Okay.
So there's a second person.
So we're not giving a two percent to something that hasn't even started yet.
Gotcha.
But I would imagine technically speaking. The other issue is, don't forget, he is a temporary employee, so he is under wage.
Yeah.
It's just that it won't be sixty thousand. Because like you said, they're not going to get somebody right away. But this, so what this does is it reduces the wages, which is fine. And it also gives increased coverage of the office. So I think as a stepping stone to wherever they go, this is actually very helpful.
And does Dave benefit from any, any co-op or anything?
No. Um, yes. I mean, as a temporary employee, he will, yeah.
As a temporary employee, so he would benefit from that?
Right. But still, I mean, the difference between working forty, I mean, thirty-four hours a week versus less than twenty.
Okay. I got it. Okay. So the other things sort of seem to be sensible in there. I think already we
Yeah.
had looked at those.
See, that's the difference between having a temporary employee versus having a contracted service.
Right.
And I just think that.
Yeah. It's one way to do it. Bradley, did you make the building change? The town hall building change? Did you make that? We swapped you to assessors real quick. I just want to make sure you caught up with or the-
What do you mean?
Whatever, the town hall building expenses?
Yeah.
Whatever we were talking about to reduce?
I just, I mean, he's asking for six.
Yeah.
I don't know that we go to the full six, but I mean, I think we should do something, we should.
Now, where does all this increase in gas and electric come in? Right there? Oh, okay, it's separate.
Thirty-two thousand.
We better leave that alone. Yeah, leave that alone for sure. If that's even going to be enough.
So I'd be in favor of adding three thousand.
Good God, that's still on the agenda. What's that? Green community thing?
Green community.
Oh, yeah, I just thought about that.
Bradley's getting tired here, I know.
I just had to mention it. Thanks a lot for that, Sam.
Okay, so.
And Chris, remember when you asked me if that was really needed on the eighteenth also?
We also have it on the eighteenth.
This is why.
We get to it tonight. So we may have to call a hiatus for it tonight. But so are you pretty comfortable with the gas and electric at the extra?
Yes, I am.
You're good there? Okay. So could we just reduce the town hall expenses down at maybe, I don't know, four thousand or something?
Do it down?
More than, rather than the sixty-eight?
Well, it was three now.
We increased it by three thousand.
The increase is already three thousand from last year, right? Thirty-six hundred?
No.
This year.
Bradley already made change.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry.
Year over year was only six oh six.
Your mouse is quicker than my eyes, I'm sorry.
You were worried about those cowplops.
Yeah. I didn't ask, did I?
It's the farmer in you.
It is, I can't get rid of it. Can't get rid of it. All right. So that's where we are with that? Yes?
Yeah, sure.
All right, fleet lighting. What's the deal with that? It's going up sixty-eight hundred?
Yep.
Utility.
Yeah, that's-
It's the old electric thing?
That's electricity.
Right.
Yep.
Wow.
That's already in there, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, ready to move on to the next?
Yep. Let's go to the next. So the technology equipment, we're still a little confused as to where that is or what that is. We had it in there budgeted at eighty-three, but we're showing it not spent currently?
I'm going to have to go back and take a look and some, some of that may be just the way it's been accounted for already because I know that, well, that switch that went with
Hundred eighteen dollars.
The grant, which is right now paid for the grant, that was extra and above, but it's been paid through the grant.
Right. Because we offset that amount.
Yes, I think there may be some other things that just have gotten coded incorrectly.
Okay. All right, so just maybe make that one a, got to double check or something there? All right.
I know we've got to replace two computers next year, but, and some printers, but maybe if that number that's in this year's budget is correct, maybe we'll replace the two computers this year. And then the eighty-three here can come down.
I can run a report right now if you want to see it for current year.
Next week's school vacation week, right?
Yes, it is.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I was thinking after the last meeting, just while we're waiting for this to get, that as far as that date that everybody wanted, I think it's really important that we make sure highway, fire, like-
It should be twenty-two and then it should be twenty-three.
Before we set up the building school, we have to make sure those four critical department heads are available.
Yeah, we've got it. Tentatively, did talk to the consultant. She's available. She's blocking out May twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And we, I don't know if we've heard back from the school yet, but
Yeah, but definitely highway, water, fire and-
Correct. We've got to get everybody.
Have to make sure that they're there.
Yep. And just while we're waiting on that for information's sake, Megan and Dan, Megan Gentile and Dan Breen did our first website training today.
Yeah.
We had six people who came to the training. So we had fire police, highway, transfer station, treasurer and town clerk. And so it went really well. I think people were pretty, pretty impressed with what it could do. So they're going to be trying to start working a little bit on their own pages to clean up what's there. And then we'll, we'll have two more training sessions coming up on the twentieth and the twenty-seventh. So Ed's going to send out a note to everybody to get signed up.
I think the challenge will be to, you know, when you identify a web person per department,
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming the department head would be the backup if it's not that person.
It depends, yeah.
I'm just saying because that, you know, I mean, what happens is things, people leave
People leave, right, yeah. So, yeah, and in some cases it's the department head that is coming in anyway.
Wouldn't be a bad idea with the department head to be the backup.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Where are we at?
Currently, there is only three invoices in the fiscal year to this account.
To the technology account?
But we can look at the technology services, the other line, and see if they were coded incorrectly or I input them incorrectly.
You would never
Okay.
input that incorrectly.
So those have got to be checked. So we'll let you guys double check that for the next time we get together. So let's
Do another-
Let's keep on chugging while we've still got a little bit of energy here.
But while you were on the technology, I know one of the other questions that you had sent me from the finance committee was the technology service increase.
Yeah.
And I had, when I went through the budgets, I don't think anybody from the finance committee was here, but yes, that increase is due to our changeover with the new server and changing over to doing the Microsoft three sixty-five, which are annual licenses, which are two hundred and sixty dollars per user, per year. And also now going to the new backup service, which is basically two hundred and sixty dollars a month per year.
Do we still have that backup cloud service in Northampton? That was established with that original icon?
That's the, oh, it's not under the, well, it actually falls under the services, but yeah, for scanning, yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's still there. And then, as long as I'm talking about services, I suppose it's appropriate time to bring this up. We are changing our infrastructure. We're updating our, and bringing in a new server and improving our cybersecurity and courtesy of a fifty-one thousand dollar grant from the state. During the CARES days, one of the departments in town hall brought in their own service under CARES Act funds with a server for backup and email. That obviously CARES Act is gone. So currently there's a two hundred and five dollar a month charge that I am incurring to have that second service in here. The ad hoc technology committee voted the other evening that we should have one network service for the entire town hall so we can maintain it and just keep track of one and not have any extra expenses. So if the select board so wish, we can either spend that two hundred dollars a month on something else starting on July first, or we can reduce that technology services line item that's up there by two hundred dollars a month, which is basically twenty-four hundred dollars for the year. But that other service should be discontinued.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think we, I'd reduce it by twenty-four hundred. It's two hundred a month now?
I think it's actually it's a little over two, and I think it's like two oh five or two oh six. I'd have to check.
I'd favor reducing that by twenty-four hundred. I think we've got to get all in one system.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
I mean, we invested a lot of new equipment, new technologies. Cybersecurity is a major issue. I really, yes.
Bradley, would you please reduce the technology services item, which is currently thirty-one, seven, twenty-five, by twenty-four hundred dollars?
Or did we pick it up?
No, we picked it up here. It started with there.
So services down twenty-four hundred.
Yes, correct. Yeah. Well, that helped. Little bit.
We know that, we know that the reverse nine-one-one is staying where it is.
I believe so. Well, I'll thank you for the reminder. I'll go back and take a look at that contract.
Where's the other one? The one that, the emergency call?
The code red?
Code, that's code red?
That's code red.
Yep.
Bradley, can you go back to the, that other sheet where you just changed?
Townwide.
Yeah.
It seems like small dollars, but can we just give them the 50 bucks for the Memorial Day?
Where are we?
I mean, they asked.
They asked for 10, 50.
For the flowers, yeah, absolutely. Good catch.
Down 1.
And Ed, you said the code, it's based on the population in town, it's the code red, it's not based on the number of users, correct?
It's not based on, on either, actually, it's a.
People who register?
Don't, no, it's not, it's not that, maybe, maybe. I think you, I think you're right, I think it's the number, 12200, yep, but no, it's not, not on the number of users.
The students raised it by like 15 to 20%, I was like, oh my God, what did I do?
Okay, all right, moving on, so where are we at here? So what was the change in the police wages, department wages, that was overtime mostly? The request two?
Yeah, but that's not a chief salary.
Well, the first one has a column to why. Okay, I'm looking, I'm looking at the budget, it says 112, 286? Oh, okay, never mind, never mind, 114. So the difference, the extra 60 or whatever is being asked for?
Because, as in, it wasn't his explanation that he's, he has to phase out the part timers?
Right, it was some, some of the overtime work.
That's correct, yeah.
So is there anything we can do with that, or are we stuck at the moment?
Bradley, would you scroll down to the bottom and please show the select board where we are currently in the total or summary spreadsheet, please?
All the way down?
Deficit by $6,193.61.
That we're in the positive?
Negative.
Negative, no.
More expenses than revenue.
Okay.
Thanks, Bradley.
Okay.
Just go up to police education you talked about.
Which one?
The Quinn bill?
Yeah, the Quinn bill.
It's contractual.
I, I know, and I'm looking here, and we've spent $14,000 so far. Did they, does most of the payment come towards the end of the fiscal year?
I, I think, isn't it tied to their anniversary date when they get that stipend?
I think it is.
Yes, it's, it's not like it's paid bi-weekly with the, with the check.
Why is there a difference in request two, is that because of unknown employees?
Because of the difference in the request two for just wages of, the theory of bringing in another full-time officer to replace the part-time officers.
Yeah. So the police educational incentive this year was budgeted at 44,000, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we've spent 14 so far, are we likely to spend the rest of that?
And that was as of April 6th?
Right, there's 29,000 left in that line.
It looks like not, only because in the left side of your packet, you'll find a town meeting article for transfers for the police department.
There you go.
Which would take $3,000 from Ed incentive account and put it to police overtime account, take $3,000 from the Ed incentive account and put it into the building expense account, take $4,000 from the Ed incentive account and put it into the police wage account.
So there's 10,000 that's going to go away, so that leaves maybe.
They're pulling from educational incentive.
Yeah. Okay, so taking it from there, all right. Anything else in that whole area? Keep on moving, I guess. So, coming down to the EMD, so we have nothing in request one for, I'm sorry, for the, sorry, administrative aid, there's nothing there in request one, but there's a request in two, now we had been talking about trying to share somebody between fire and police as an admin type person, and that we don't have it in the police budget, correct?
No.
So should we put some sort of placeholder in there in budget one for an admin, shared admin?
That seems on the high side for.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how it was calculated, but I mean.
Just looking at the numbers from the assessor.
But if you're, if you're going to put an admin person in there, is that going to eliminate the current practice that's in place now? And are we just shifting, is, is increasing this number actually padding that budget?
Right. He's, he's right, because it's currently being done.
There's some, there's somebody doing payroll, there's somebody doing the medical.
So they can just create a, a.
Yeah, right.
And my, my memory on this, and I believe it was the EMT and not the medic level, but when the chief was here and going over things, is, what I remember is, this just wasn't an admin, his thought process was that.
It'd be an.
Right.
It would be someone that could go jump on the ambulance.
Right.
In an emergency if needed, which, yes, drives the cost.
So it would be someone who would be there anyway, doing this, doing that time, until they have to, until there's a call.
So then could you share them with the police department?
Right, so that, that still leaves the police department.
I say wait for the study.
Yeah, 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 I would.
I mean, at least as it comes to fire, if, if the thought was still to start with, you know, to split somebody in part-time, part-time, and we wanted to see if we could at least fund the part-time, started with a part-time position at the PD? Who, and, but then we'd have to be clear with this person that we're hiring.
Yeah.
Right.
This fiscal year, it looks like part-time, but it's our intent to go full-time next year, once we straighten out the vision.
Yeah.
The tab two would essentially be the override budget.
At $40,000?
I am going to highly recommend, not at the $40,000 level, but that an admin assistant, whether it be shared with the police department or not, be included here, just for the, I mean, when you stop to think about, the fire chief is the only full-time employee, you know, there and is going in 16 different directions, you know, someone in an admin position to do, whether it's the payroll, the vendor payables. Yeah. You know, what have, what have you, I mean, I, I just got two more capital requests from him printed out today, you know, I've been looking for three days and have even threatened to shut off the email accounts over there, because I need to see active, which of all the ones that are listed in Bluehost are currently active, so I can send my final list off to do our cybersecurity training.
So I'd just ask a question about this, about the salary line, that's in excess of what we're paying in other departments.
Right, I, I think Ed was suggesting that it would be a different number, but that position would be.
And not to be the 40, but something.
It'd be a, a number in alignment with our current pay scales.
Fine.
So what might that be?
Well, we're, look at admin assist, look at the admin assist for the assessors, we just did that, 32 hours a week at whatever.
I mean, but you.
29.
But you could probably find somebody less expensive than.
Well, you're talking about the difference.
You've got a more experienced person there, you, you could fire, hire a lower-level admin person if it's just more clerk-level stuff, I mean, you're probably.
It's, it's not that, I mean, I can tell you what it is, but it's not that much more, it's like 17 or something.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a lot, I mean, you bring up her wage thing.
Union wage thing?
I would, yeah, I thought it was more.
Well, the, the range is, I think, 17.
Yeah, okay.
I can tell you exactly what it is, let's see, assessors, 1590, actually, that was FY '22, hang on, 17, yeah, 1781. I mean, right now is at 50, 15 is minimum, if we go up 2 and 1/2, what's that going to be, not much more.
1781 is the.
So, I mean, you could figure it a little bit less, but I don't think you can go.
Yeah, okay.
Especially if you're looking for somebody that can do, I mean, the payroll in fire is.
That's all library, isn't it?
It's crazy.
Yeah.
Well, pick, go ahead. It looks like the current rate, at least in the assessors department, is 1781 an hour, and I know, actually, Janine is up in the, the staffs.
She's been, yeah.
She has a lot of longevity here.
Right.
And it's, I'm not going to really recommend going any lower than that, because, I mean, minimum wage is 15, you can go to McDonald's or Burger King, and they're paying you 17 bucks an hour.
Plus, it's a lot of confidential information, I mean, I think, I mean, if you're going to be a payroll person in fire, it's not easy to do that, that is really a tough.
Okay, no, I'm funny, so let's.
So make it 30, or, I mean, I don't think it needs to be 40.
No, I, I think 40.
So are you, are you thinking just for the fire or a combination?
I'm thinking a combo.
Combination.
Combination.
Okay, so let's just do this, we're going to.
And what about your comment about the fact that somebody's already doing that, I mean, are we just shifting it, can we take it out, can we do only half and have fire take it out of fire?
If, if, if this ask is only going in the override section, then I would say put it in there.
Okay. Okay, I, I agree with that. And what about the other big ask of the police there for the wages, the shifting, that was a pretty big increase, right?
At 19 hours a week, and I was thinking shared between the two, because I'm not trying to get to the 20, that would come out to 18, 212, 15.
For the two, for the two of them?
For one person working 19 hours a week?
19 hours.
Yeah, 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 well, that's about half, right?
Yeah. So should we, so at least knock that down to 20 there, rather than 40? In the, in the quote-unquote wishlist budget?
Just remember that, but.
It's going to be shared.
That's supposed to cover fire and police.
And is there, there's no place to put half and half in, in, put half in the police budget, there's no line for it, right? Right, man?
Make one.
You can make one.
I'm being a little cagey here.
Can you make a line?
What?
That's an override.
Oh, just.
Yes, 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 yes.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
So, but that would be 20 rather than 40, or you're going to keep the 40?
40.
You're going to keep the 40?
40, yeah.
Okay.
It's zero in budget one.
Zero budget one.
Yeah, 20 in budget two, but that's actually going to be a shared position.
Yeah, right, okay.
And I think the 20,000 there, if that 20,000 gets approved, you've got the 18-something with that, and then you've got something for FICA, you know, to be able to.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
So above that, did we just skip over, decide to float the, the police wage thing? That was a pretty big increase.
The 60,000, or the 4, the 38,000?
Yeah, 722. We're leaving it for now?
I don't see how you can get there.
Okay, okay.
Unless you wanted to put.
Throw it in the override.
Well, if you want to do a second piece of that of X amount of this is for EMS override and why, and we can do that.
Yeah, but I, I would want.
So make it one question, but that, that's the only ties between those two.
I think I would want Chief Ellingsworth the support on this, I think we have to be very careful.
The public safety rule.
Yeah, I think for now, I, I'd rather just skip over it.
Okay.
But are, so does it note that we may have to come back to it, though?
And we're all good on the whole ambulance thing, right?
Yep, is there anything else there?
I'm trying to figure out, EMT standby went down.
Yeah, because he doesn't really use it.
So Ed, there's no medical IV pump.
Okay.
Capital request, right? Where did it go?
Was it like a $6,000 charge?
All right, how's the mitts submitted, yeah? He's looking for it in this year's, which he doesn't have funding for unless we actually covered it in a transfer, I have told them, in my opinion, that's a state mandate that they should pay for it, I'm trying to drive it into the next year's budget, which I don't think it is in here, but. I think ultimately it'll come out as part of the override, right?
Well.
Because.
We could add $6,000 into the override under EMS expenses and force it into next year's budget instead of this year's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I'd be in favor of.
Well, it's a one-time expense, I don't know why it's, you know, why isn't it in the list for capital?
Because that isn't visible as an operating expense, it puts it somewhere else.
So what are we doing, we're putting in 6,000, or is that?
It's not an operating.
That's what I would recommend.
In the budget two.
In budget two.
Yeah.
Is an add to EMS expenses, wherever they are. Yeah, like 40.
So add 6,000 to wishlist for EMS expenses.
So, aren't we moving over certain things that we are prioritizing, what is the function of budget two at this point?
Budget two as it relates to the fire department will be the cumulative ask for the override override.
Okay, but budget two as it relates to other departments will be not our priority.
Correct. Those, except for the select ones we shift over to budget one.
Right, okay, I just want to make sure that there was a difference between fire and the rest of the departments.
All right, and then what happened on the whole fuel issue, then?
Well, I, and I just want to say for the record, I've seen enough emails and invoices to show that for the past 10 years, departments have been billed for their fuel.
Really?
Not in a timely manner, but they've been billed every year.
They have.
Yes, the highway superintendent, I don't know if he sent them to everybody, but highway superintendent sent me 20 different emails and examples and chains of emails between the former town accountant and just.
So he's been saying he wasn't charged for fuel until just this year.
Or the trash pickup at the parks department, that.
It's all been done.
Ian's got, or not Ian, Randall has a well-documented paper trail that it's been going on. Fire, the police chief says, if you wanted to consider that extra officer as part of an override, that he can certainly justify it with the statistics.
And the admin aide or admin assist?
I didn't go that far.
Okay, so you can go back up and just highlight the, the police.
Want me to ask him to come down if he's available? No, he's, he's leaving in the morning on vacation.
No.
He's leaving on vacation.
Right, he is, yes.
It's probably going to be like his last vacation, and they're going to break down and have to come back into U-Haul.
No, no, no.
We're going to approve for the override whether he comes down or not.
All right, I think it's going to be emergency services.
Whatever color you're, color you're making the override, just make it that color.
Could we have violet?
Yeah.
The color violet?
Sure.
I want lavender.
9:30, so, oh, Bradley.
Oh, try purple.
Bradley, don't get sucked into this.
No, no, just, we're getting punched, punched drunk here. Hang on, let's see if we can squeak out a half an hour and then just call it quits, how's that?
How many more things on this agenda?
Because, I mean, we're going to lose Mr. Lumber on Thursday, right, you're not going to, I mean, Tuesday, you're here, no, you're here Tuesday, but you're not here next Thursday.
I'm driving back for it on Tuesday, I, I can't be here Thursday.
Thursday, so you're here the 18th, okay.
Am I changing here?
Whatever color you were trying to make the override for the fire, just make it, so we know that that's override, whatever you're doing with that.
What line am I looking at?
The, the police wages, that one, right, the 722, I think.
You currently have it yellow, yeah.
Uh, okay, whatever.
And the, the part there that would be the override is the difference between 21 and 60, right?
Right.
Right, it's not the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So write yourself an out, there you go, that's where you go, okay, we got it. Okay, let's move on, yeah. Yikes.
So really not that much on the building side, huh?
That's it was low funded.
All, all through, of course, there'll be an increase on the wage.
Yep, 5%.
Yeah.
Those are cherry sheet.
Yeah, did you build in the building inspector increase yet?
Technically, it'll probably be more than a 5% because I got to go in and calculate the 5% change this year, and then see where that falls on the pay scale and what he would move.
Okay, from this year to next year.
Okay, so we know that we've still got to work on the, the building.
But if you put in a 5%, it's going to.
Throw it up.
No.
No.
Tickle my memory that I've got to do that calculation.
So we should put in the 5% now?
Put in the 5%.
For building inspector.
Highlight it, so.
Building commissioner, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We should actually change his title, too.
Police chief wanted to make sure I wasn't getting, getting the select board members upset with the thought of the override for either the additional officer or the shared admin.
So just one, one, back up just a second, you had something for the special town meeting, what was that line up there?
It's zeroed out, it's, it's in prior years.
Oh.
Right there, 20,000.
All right, whatever that was, okay, all right, so where are we, school-wise now?
We're good.
We're good? Okay. So.
Can we go to the Highway Department?
Vocational's on there, did that get changed?
I didn't, he went too fast, the change was made on there for Hampshire.
Correct.
Yeah, we changed the one Hampshire kid, right?
Okay.
Now, while you're here, one of the other questions that the.
Yeah.
Finance committee asked that you had sent along to Bradley and myself.
Use the mic, please.
Chris was the.
Winter Roads.
Winter Roads, uh, wages. So.
So, here's my thing on that, I completely understand what they're saying, once you go up, you can never go down.
Right.
I'm okay not putting that 39,000 in there, as long as that 39,000 stays in his budget somewhere.
Right, and that's, that's kinda where I was gonna go. Because of this. We currently have, I think it's about a 50 or 54,000 dollar snow and ice deficit for this year, we're gonna have to cover. Now, he'll, he'll probably be able to cover that, most of that out of wages because he doesn't have a full staff. We want him to get back to a full staff. So, let's just say in an abnormal year, if he was full-staffed, he wouldn't be able to pull it out of the non-winter wages. So, if, whether we've got a 30, 40, 50, 60,000 deficit, if we're not gonna go into another department to try to find it, it's gonna come from his, which probably means it's either gonna come from the work that goes into maintaining the streets and guardrails and all that, or machinery maintenance. And it's probably gonna be the one that basically maintains everything. So theoretically, when we ask that department head in Highway to do that, you are saying, okay, well, if we go over in snow and ice, we're gonna make you cover it within your own department. However, that also means that any year that we go over, we are going to say, we're probably gonna end up having to reduce the services to all our town residents because we're not gonna be able to fix the roads, the streets, the potholes, what have you, because we're taking from that budgeted amount. So, that's, what John said was basically what I was thinking is that, yeah, you don't have to go up in that account because you never wanna come down, but we should put that same 39,000 someplace else.
So, where does it go, though? Where would it fit?
The general wages?
The general, general expenses or general, I mean, sorry, general.
Yeah, expenses.
Well, it's, it's a wage line, though, Winter Roads wages. So, it'd have to go to another wage line, right?
It can't pull.
Doesn't have to.
You can't pull from a wage line until the very, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, I mean, right now, the wage line accounts for a fully-staffed department. So, if we're going over now with winter wages, winter road wages, we, we're sure that's gonna be another 30, 40,000 dollars next year?
Well, technically, we haven't gone over with Winter Roads wages. We went over with the.
Winter Road expenses.
Winter Roads expenses.
Yeah.
But because these are kinda tied together.
Yeah.
As snow and ice accounts.
Yeah.
Anything that wasn't spent, which wasn't a whole heck of a lot, I think it ended up, I think we ended up with maybe 30 or 35,000 dollars left in the. 25,000 in the winter wages, but that is eligible to come up. It doesn't, because you got a positive there, it's counting against what you went negative in the expenses. So, we didn't spend all of the wages, but we still went way over in the expenses.
Okay, I guess I'm just not sure why we have to move that. I mean, I would expect that if they were, if they had room in their budget, which they do, that they can do a line out and transfer and pay for the Winter Roads deficit. And if there was a year where they didn't have it, then we'd be looking to other places that were underspent. So, why, why is it so important to move that 30, 40,000 dollars into another line? That's my question.
I, I think it's because he's always in deficit and he's always stealing from other lines in his budget every year.
Okay, so there's been a pattern of always being at least 30,000 dollars overspent in that line of winter wages?
Yeah, I, I think it's been worse. Be, because we've had worse winters, right? And now we're, and now it's going mild, which is why the expenses are, yeah.
But we've, we've got, right now, if I'm looking at this right, Winter Road wages, we've still got 35,000 left in there as of April.
But what's in the expenses? 'Cause you have to net those two numbers together.
And the expense account is minus 83,000.
Right, so net those, and he's negative, what, 55,000?
I think you had another payroll hit today.
Maybe another payroll, so.
And so, this has been a pattern every single year? And it's only because of his being short-staffed that he's able to cover it?
Right, so when he's not, when he's not short-staffed, he's, he's cutting services to the town.
Correct.
I can't fill that pothole, I can't grade that dirt road. Right now, he can only do it 'cause he doesn't have staff and then.
Okay, I didn't realize it was every single year. So, there's been a pattern of at least three years of always being under by 30, 40,000 dollars?
I'd have to go back and check, but I think every year. Well, I know last year I wrote a snow and ice deficit, uh, deficit letter. I think I've written one every year of the five I've been here.
I know last year was a deficit, I just wasn't sure if this is enough of a pattern that we're building it back into the budget somewhere else.
So, with the, back in the, in the general highway wages of the 247, that's a 14,000 dollar increase over the current year. So, that, that is the fully-staffed.
Correct.
Off, uh, department with somewhat of a higher wage to attract new people, is that? I mean, what's the difference? What, what brings in the 14,000 difference from?
The contract, the contracts, yeah, the union contract.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yep, thank you. Forgot, yep, okay. All right, so.
And the, the reason he broke it out this way is, he does the calculations like Ian, Ian does. He's very efficient and calculates the individuals, the hours, the salaries. And then what they do is, and I can't remember how it's broken up, but they break the year into two portions, basically what you call summer and winter in a, in a number of weeks. So, he's calculated all that out and then just breaks it out. So, he's calculated everything at the contractual increase. And, and then he breaks it out, and that's why. The winter wages are reflecting the larger amount.
So, where would we put this 39,000, then? In Winter Road wages? If we wanna keep it in the budget, where does it fit?
In some expense line.
Yeah, for highway expenses.
I mean, if it really is for wages for winter, then it won't be able to be used under the expense line unless it's a contract, right?
Well, right, but, so he, he's underspent his wages this year and he's overspent his expenses by. So, I mean, as long as, you know, some of that number stays somewhere in there, whether he has to use it for expenses or wages, I don't. I like it better in expenses than just adding it to general highway wages. 'Cause at least, general highway wages right now, we can tie to a contract and to an FT, TEO account.
Yeah.
General highway expenses?
Yeah.
So, he can go ahead and use the expense line to cover Winter Road wages?
Yes.
Or vice versa.
Yeah, right.
It's only, we only have to worry about covering a deficit.
Yeah.
When the total of that 2641 has exceeded. It's like he, because of the type, type of year we had, where we used a ton of.
Salt.
Sand, salt, because they were all mostly ice storms. He had actually come to me, I think, five weeks before I actually wrote the deficit letter because it was all materials. But at the time, you looked at the wages line item and he had more than enough wages to cover it. So, yeah, we, we always prefer winters where it's nice fluffy snow and it's just plowing, rather than using materials, 'cause the materials add up quick.
'Cause, 'cause looking at the, you know, the bills, it's like been 100,000 dollars worth of salt this year.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
There's a huge increase.
Yeah, yep. Okay. Got yourself enough notes to remember what we're doing there, we're like, okay. All righty. Are we heading into the next?
I'm just worried that the MS04 is gonna be higher than 28, 750. Do you know that, do you know that yet, Ed?
MS4? Haven't we made that a special article on the warrant?
Against, against Randall's wishes. But his idea about, you know, coming up with a fee structure for it was probably a good idea because that's only gonna get higher and.
Well, it's, it's one of those ones that originally I thought, oh, okay, we'll go through this for, you know, two or three years and then it'll drop off. Well, it's not. It's 30, you know, been pretty consistent at 30,000 dollars a year. And that's just for the MS4 permit itself. It doesn't account for, you know, the time and the equipment that are just spent to meet that requirement of, like I say, vacuuming out the catch basins, doing the street sweeping, which is required of that, and the capital investment in the equipment.
Yep, okay. Let's keep on moving while we have a little bit of energy left here, guys. See how far we can get. Okay. So, we've done some of this already, right?
Yeah, we went over the health stuff.
Yeah, we don't care that.
COA.
COA.
I do support going up to 32 on the COA. I think it's gonna be very difficult to recruit a new director at 26 hours a week.
Yeah. Well, and I think, I think what they're looking for, too, I mean, that 45 would be the lowest end of the scale, won't it?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I think this is gonna be closer to the 60,000 range as well, to get a qualified person in here.
Isn't, isn't a portion of that salary offset, though?
Some of it is offset by the formula grant.
No, not the director.
Not the director, the other ones, not the director.
Yeah.
We moved it over a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say, when I first came here.
Yeah.
I think, like, a proportion of it was paid by the Fritta grant for the COA directors.
Formula grant.
Yeah, but even the Fritta.
Oh, really?
Because I think it allowed 10% or whatever for the time to keep the wages of the drivers and the schedules and stuff, so.
But we, yeah.
So, if you're looking at the whole expense for the, for the council on aging, it's about 42,000 dollars in year one.
Yeah.
Option, option one and, and, yikes.
Of general fund money.
Yeah, of the general fund.
It's very low compared to other towns.
It's really low.
Are people in a support, or at least at this point, to go up on that line?
I think we need to increase the hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, think at least the building itself should be open in the, the same hours as Town Hall is. And then, like I say, if, if you're, if they're thinking of doing, you know, calculating out for, you know, board meetings or any special events, you know, so, you know, instead of 30, maybe, yeah, maybe 32 is the right number for a week.
That figure on two is based on 32.
Yeah. I'd favor 32 hours. I think that's gonna be realistic, really. So, which one is that?
45, 301.
Yeah, okay. But again, I think that's gonna be your, even with the expanded hours, that's gonna be a low-level salary request, 'cause the job posting, I know she, we got a request sent to Ed today to come on the agenda for next week, but I think it was gonna be in that 40 to 60,000 dollar range as a potential salary range to advertise.
Do they have a candidate?
No, just to advertise, this is just to get the, get the ball rolling on this.
And I'm thinking, just reading the explanation, I could be wrong, this may be based on 31 hours a week.
No, it's 32.
Expand hours to 32.
Then the narrative doesn't match.
834 and accommodate.
Expand hours, well, it says to 32. To match other departments, 830 to 4, in order to accommodate additional programming plus two hours a month for the board meeting. Well, it, open is 30. And if it's just two hours a month.
It's 32.
32.
Oh, oh.
None of it's two hours a month.
So, they don't match. But, yeah, I, I think, I think it probably should say.
I think it's the narrative.
And two, you know, extra program hours or something.
I think the, the figures right, I think the narrative might be wrong. 'Cause I know that they, their hope is for 32 hours.
Yeah.
And it is consistent with all these other department heads that, I mean, other than the clerk.
Yeah.
Everybody else is pretty much 32, 34, 35.
So, we're gonna move 45 over to your Budget One?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what's the other narrative on the wage increase?
Part of it's funded by grant money?
Nah, the request for the administrative assistant to be added.
Nobody in there now.
Right.
Did they say how many hours they were talking about for that?
What's the narrative say?
Obviously, gotta be part-time, but four hours a week.
Yeah, but from the general fund with additional hours would be funded.
From the formula grant, right. So, that, that gets that 7,000, is that what that is? Or the 7,500, is that only the?
The 34, 45, isn't additional, 'cause that, don't forget, there's still, there's still operating budget that funds wages, like the program director.
Oh, okay.
And the volunteer coordinator.
Yeah, they're both partially funded.
So, is the 3,400 what we need for the admin assistant?
I think that's the hope.
And I'm just, I'll, I'll be the bad person here because I don't get to vote. But when the COA came forward and asked for the program coordinator, that was supposed to take the place of the admin assistant, number one. Number two, the office is already jam-packed with people. They really don't have a place for another individual.
Well, I'm.
Hopefully, it's going to be corrected.
Well, yeah, I, I think they would figure that out.
Well, there are three workstations in there.
There's only supposed to be two. The director went and did that on her own and then wanted it supported through the network infrastructure. We were still in COVID times and I, the network wouldn't accommodate it. And I still can't believe that they, she tried to fit three people in that tight office.
So, what are we thinking?
They need the work. I, I don't think just because there isn't the room for the person.
Yeah.
That you, that you make the decision not to, not to have the extra help.
How about if we put it in and we revisit it next time we come back around?
Make it one of those yellows?
Yeah. Put in the 3,400 or whatever it is and.
And people's days and hours are staggered, so they're not all, everybody's in there all at the same time.
Nobody's there.
And the truth of the matter is, a program director is clearly not the same as administrative assistant. And I think that every department has a lot of things that are done by higher-level people because of a lack of admin assistance.
So, that admin, though, includes, wait, did you not put it in the admin line? Yeah, it's in the wages line, but it.
There is no admin line.
So, it's just combined wages.
It's all combined wages.
I see, okay.
All right, well, we can come back.
All right, we can come back and take a look at it. Okay. All right, nothing much changing on veterans, right? Library was pretty straightforward. I think there was an issue, right, yeah, utilities was a big challenge, was it not, Ed? Was that a problem? I think there was something recently about their, their bills or something, or.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're like, well, even my bills, I've reached the end of my energy budget at this time of year, too, so, hang on, let me just do a quick calculation.
Because I think one of the things that they were talking about was the lighting, which we're going to take up under the Green Communities thing, so.
Right.
That should settle itself out.
Yeah, that was an excellent point she made about the lighting.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Forty. Okay, where are we? Five minus...
Where are we now, library?
Library area.
I mean, I'd say at least give them 45 cents, because they, they dropped their budget year over year.
They're, they're really...
Just by using what I've used in my own budget, my analysis of what the energy costs have done over the last year, I don't even recommend their tab two wish list for utilities. I come up with $12,907.60 is what should be the correct figure in there.
Can we just make it 13,000?
Now who's running rounding here?
It's the library. I mean, come on, just give them 13,000.
Where does Cow Power and Energy Credit sit?
We're just laughing, because I'm usually the one that gets kicked for breaking up the Cow Power. So, yes, what was the point for... That's true. Yeah, so we, we have that credit that goes toward it, right?
I have to do the entries every two weeks or so.
Right.
Library is always one of the highest ones charged, so it's $600 every time we get this invoice.
Okay. Yeah, so it would make sense to put in that higher amount for utilities, then? I think so. So John voted for 13, sounds good?
I'd find 13,000. 13,010 cents.
What's the library expense other? I'm just wondering, why is it in budget one and two? Why is it in line one and two?
It's the same as last year.
Oh, it's the same, okay, not going to...
Same, yeah, no change, yeah.
Why are we budgeting under the director wage from last year?
Replacement?
Yeah, she was in a...
I understand.
Yeah.
We're not well funding it from last year.
And the question that always came up, are we meeting whatever proportion for state funding?
Yeah, I believe they said that we are.
They said budget one did, and we just increased it, so.
Yeah. Okay. What's next?
I don't know.
Benefits?
No, 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 we have a culture and recreation, parks.
Parks, yeah.
Did we skip over cemetery?
I think we did this.
Where's the, yeah, cemetery, where's the cemetery one, they had a request in there?
I thought they were up with the board.
Up with general government?
They were up there somewhere. There it is. Yeah, they had it, right, because that was some of their...
Their tree business.
So budget one and budget two for them were the same.
Were the same.
And it's an increase.
It's an increase over last year, yeah.
Which I'm not necessarily opposed to, I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah, and that was for a wide variety of things that they came into us.
Yeah, mostly maintenance.
Spending the cemetery maintenance, et cetera, but looking at surveying out new, new plots, all that kind of stuff. Let's leave it in there for now. I'm fine with it myself.
Yep, and then the rest is just benefits and debt, right?
Yeah, I think we hit everything else, we're just down to the benefit part, maybe. So the retirement, we dealt with some of the workers' comp stuff, or not yet? Whatever you said had been reduced?
That retirement number, I know I asked this question, does that represent the discount? Or is that the full ask?
That represents the discount and the number's been double and triple checked this year.
And the workers' comp's already been adjusted?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so, and we've got East Street in there now, or not yet?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, there we go. So, where are we at?
What do we look, let me see the bottom line again, yeah.
24,000 in deficit.
Did we already add the extra votes?
So, I, so, we take that number, 24,001, 4063, and go reduce something in the fire department, move it over to budget two.
Do the vote student, add the vote student, extra student?
We're still going to need the override, though. We still need the override, right?
Well, because that's just the regular budget.
Right, yeah.
And then the override will be fire department house, so, can we go to the fire department tab?
Can we find 24,000 out of the fire department and then dump it in the override?
Oh, you betcha.
So all their stuff was included in the override, right? The 390?
No, we're not there yet.
Oh.
We're just trying to balance the regular budget.
No, that, that, that'll go, but...
Or is there anything in the existing budget that we can switch to another source?
Yeah.
A one-time expense like ARPA or a capital or...
Right.
Last time, remember, we were retiring a debt and we ended up shifting that over to stabilization?
So, like, maybe the, maybe the turnout gear, although that's kind of a yearly expense.
It is.
The 12,000 comes in there every year, right?
But to Maureen's point, is, is there the, whatever our deficit was, 24,000 or so, is there 24,000 that we can fund in ARPA?
Shift around.
Yeah.
Because just looking at this tab right now, that means that the override potential would be the 213 minus the 29. It's like 190, and then you add in the 40 over on the PD side.
40 plus the extra wages.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 20, 20 plus.
Right, so, we're talking about an override's looking somewhere around 220, $230,000? If, just rough numbers right now.
By adding in the police section there, too.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think you'd be a little higher than that, I think you're up at like 260 or 270.
But if you take the 213?
Because we're leaving 29 in the budget, so it's 213 minus 29. And then, I think over on the PD side, wasn't, didn't it net out to 38,000 or something?
For the police?
Yeah.
Plus 40, and then what was the difference in the wage for the police, 30?
Right there, 60.
38,500.
38. 38,5.
But don't forget, you're probably adding on about also $30,000 to health insurance.
Yeah.
That needs to be covered here.
Okay. So add another 30?
30.
For health insurance.
So 240, 250, somewhere there? It's about that, yeah.
There you go. Got a palatable amount?
Yep.
Well, did you see the newspaper today? What was it that was...
Yeah, yeah, another town.
Hatfield's doing like a million, a million two on their override.
Right.
Override.
Yeah, well, that gets us at least some, somewhere for tonight to get what we're thinking about.
I think 252 is a justifiable and defendable number.
Yeah.
I, I, do I think it's enough to solve everything? No, but without having the analysis done, right, the...
Gets us somewhere at least toward...
Yeah, I think it's definitely a step in the correct direction.
Are we going to hold off on that 24,000, or are we going to try to find a place to move something?
I'll look at some options over the weekend.
Okay.
Which 24 was that, sir?
Uh, the 24 that we're over.
Oh.
Yeah, because we, I think you were going to check into a few other things.
If anything, we'll just fund stormwater with ARPA money one more time.
God.
Well, that's, that's at the top of my list if there's 28,000 in ARPA, but...
Stabilization.
All right, I, I will sharpen my ARPA pencil here and see where the heck we are here. I'm just like, ah! All right, I will, I will have some figures for us next time we meet that hopefully will be a little bit correct. Okay, guys, I think this is a good exercise. So, at this point in time, I think we don't have anything more specific in terms of warrant articles. I'm going to move that we hold off on the Green Communities stuff until Tuesday. A couple more days isn't going to make a big difference, right, Ed, on that?
Well, unless, is anybody in favor of just approving it and finding the $5,000?
Well, that was, yeah, that was...
What was recommended?
We, we kind of did prioritize the, the proposals last week, I believe it was Town Hall, Police, Library, and Norris, was it not?
Correct.
Those four, and it came out to 143,000. I, that's all, I mean, everybody had a chance to kind of look through their proposals, and it's really those first few pages of each one that is the summary, and the rest of it is so much other technical stuff that I personally didn't have a clue what I was looking at. So, I'd be fine if, if that's all we would need to do, sure. Take a motion to work on those four proposals toward the Green Communities grant, knowing that we're about $5,000 over and we'd have to look for it probably in ARPA, yeah, so...
Either ARPA or printed in the budget, right?
I'm sorry.
Does it have to be in this year's? Do we need the money in this year?
Uh...
The five grand, or could it be in '24?
Uh, I would put it in, I would, well...
This year.
I would, put it in this year's.
Already an extension.
It can carry over, so, yeah.
Put in, put in the money in ARPA, '23?
As, as 23, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the top four...
Energy savers.
Energy savings that we had already discussed before, and to determine in future where to come up with the additional $5,000.
Say it.
All right, call those in favor.
Aye.
I don't think that was entirely clear, but you know what I mean. Yeah, well, most likely we'll end up taking that excess out of, out of ARPA.
Well, it'll be worth it in the long run, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. Looks like we have some pretty good energy savings. So I don't think we need to go into the details on warrant articles, although, Ed, you reminded yourself that you have a new warrant article you talked about, did you write it down?
The, got the police department transfer and the EMS transfer.
Yep. Right, okay.
And...
Well, it's not really, the EMS would be, actually be an appropriation from ambulance receipts.
Yeah, okay, right.
And when is, when are we going to get the list of warrants and also the capital request?
We have the list of... We have the list of capital requests.
You have the list of capital requests, except the two things the chief brought forward to me.
Well, it far exceeds what we have in there, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, the capital meeting has a meeting on schedule.
Rather than replacing the tanker truck for the $300,000, he came up with other options of, let's say... One is rebuilding the engine to tankered standards until new tanker can be purchased out of capital, which is $45,000. And then, oh, and he did come, yeah, I got the one for the IV pumps here, which is...
Okay, so that...
$6,000, or, oh, I love this. $5,126. Boy, does that just get over the $5,000 threshold.
There's probably sales tax on it, but I'd back that out.
Shipping and handling.
So, does Capital have a meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so you all make a recommendation?
It's on the calendar.
Oh, is it? Okay, I hadn't, I hadn't seen it.
So you all, you all make a recommendation on what gets prioritized? Don't you have a policy on how that gets, you save...
We started it last year.
We started it last year with a recommendation, and we decided we weren't taking it as a policy, it was going to be a recommendation.
Recommendation to keep a certain percentage in there.
Correct, yeah, I think that is true. So, okay, good. So, we have that coming up. What else is on here? Is there anything else?
Ed, I just made a comment while you were out of the room, I think that if we're talking about the 24th of May, we just have to make absolutely sure that those four department heads, if not also the planning board, like, I don't want to book it and then find out that, you know, Randall's on vacation and, you know, the fire chief can't be there, and the police chief, and water. Like, I think it's important that they're all there.
The school is available.
Yeah.
I can tell you that, I found that out, so...
If you could just double-check that the department heads are committed to be there.
Now, Capital's got a meeting for the 26th, so is that going to be timely enough for what, all we need to do? That's what's on the schedule here for my turn.
That seems kind of close, when do they do by?
Well, I think we actually have to have signed the warrant...
By the 24th.
By the 24th at the latest.
Yeah. Hmm, I think we've got to rethink that, who, who put up the meeting?
Who put that school vacation right in the middle?
Oh, wow.
John did? Okay. John posted it, yeah, sorry. I think we're going to have to back it up, John, a little bit somehow here.
Well...
How can we do that? Let's see.
You can do it Zoom, does the person, does the person have to be in the country?
No.
No, but you'd need a...
You need a forum, that's all.
No, no, you don't.
You don't need a forum.
Well, you still need a quorum for the meeting, but yeah, the person doesn't have to be in the country. As long as you end up with three people on the Zoom, you're fine.
So if they could, yeah, so I'll, I'll text Margaret, and if, if, I really, I don't, I don't have any time, but, but I'm, I'm happy if they meet without me.
So Heather, Janet, Margaret, you...
Oh, and Sharon, so, yeah, they, okay. They should be able to get three of them together.
So instead of the 26th, maybe they could aim for like the 19th or 20th or somewhere in there?
Yeah, that's right, Monday, right?
Maybe the Monday?
Monday's a holiday, does it matter?
They got to do it...
17th is Patriots' Day, huh? Or, right, no, is that right?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
17th's Patriots' Day.
So they, they have to do it.
Could they meet on Tuesday before the live board meeting?
Maybe they could try the 18th before we meet, if possible.
Then they need to get it posted by tomorrow.
Yeah.
I can take care of that, I had Lucy give me rights.
Yeah.
So I can at least post it and see if they'll...
That would be helpful, because I think that's going to be relayed too late on the 26th, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else for tonight, offhand?
Motion to adjourn?
No, someone, second.
All in favor, aye.
All right. My voice drastically changed there. All right, we'll call as I was adjourned at 10:07 PM.
It's old habits, Chris.
I made that motion, I seconded it.
Yes, I got it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks again, again, for being here.
Yeah, no, and I think this is a good work session, I mean, I think we...
Thanks, everybody.
I think we made some headway, actually, here.
Yep.
So, tough one.